I do see that Manager Crafton is still connecting to audio. We'll give her just a moment, but otherwise, President Siegler.
Hello, everyone. As we've been doing in the past couple of years, we're gonna pull this meeting via Zoom due to an abundance of caution over COVID. We hope that our next regular meeting will be in person. We've got equipment at the office that's being tested that would allow a hybrid meeting. So some people could join via Zoom like we do now, and some can attend in person. I believe we need to do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith, is that correct?
Yes, I'll call the roll for attendance. Manager Crafton.
Present.
Manager Duval.
Present.
Manager Cook.
Present.
Manager Pedersen.
Present.
President Siegler.
Present.
All managers are present.
Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And there's one recommendation that's been made that we split the matters of public interest into two sections. One right after approval of the agenda, and then that would be, you know, general matters of public interest. And then a second matters of public interest related to the Spring Road proposed project, which I believe is items seven H, I, and J on the agenda.
President Siegler, seven I would be the V1 in which public comment should be taken.
Okay.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I would move to adopt the agenda with the following changes. All of the, taking all of the consent items off of the consent agenda is number one. Number two would be to table items seven H, I, and J on basis that I do not believe appropriate notice, et cetera, has been provided as required by law and splitting up and having general comments section. You know, I do not believe complies with the requirements of the law.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Hearing no second, I'll entertain other motions.
Mr. President, I'd like to put forth a movement to approve the agenda as written. I believe Manager Cook would like to pull the items from the consent agenda. Otherwise, that's my movement.
President Siegler.
Manager Crafton.
I'll second.
Just a clarification, does that include splitting the matters of public interest?
Ah, yes. Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I'll repeat, you know, my statement that I do not believe proper notice, et cetera, has been provided with respect to item seven H, I, and J, and as a result, dealing with those matters would be a violation of Chapter 103D on that basis. Therefore, I see no reason to split the public comment period because the statutes provide for a specific process and procedure in which to deal with this matter, which is not on the agenda and which has not occurred. And, and finally, it wasn't clear to me what Manager Pedersen said, but I am per Robert's Rules of Order having all of the items in the consent agenda removed and placed on action items.
That was part of my motion, Manager Cook.
Are there any other questions or comments on the agenda on the motion before us? Administrator Jeffrey?
Yeah, Manager Cook had made his his concern about notice to me. I requested that Council Welch take a look at the notices that were provided. I can send that email to the managers, but well, he said there were some, some items in it that perhaps were spurious that it still met the intent, that it was properly noticed.
Mr. President.
President.
Um, Mr. Smith?
Well, I just wanted to reply. I, I think that that referred to the notices about the budget and tax levy hearing, and there are no published notices required for the items on this evening's agenda.
Thank you, that's correct.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
All due respect to, you know, learned counsel, I do not believe that he is correct on that basis. And I'll just, I'll say this, that with respect to those items, if I were the seller, I would not want to be moving forward and leaving any possibility that any approvals or transactions wouldn't, that were required to be taken or not taken in that regard. And I will have more to say about that if we do go to those types of those, those three items. And I'm not finished. Thank you.
Sorry.
In that regard, I would, if, if this, these three items are going to remain, that those, those three items be moved to the top of the agenda as a, I think they will take some time.
Are there any other questions or comments before we? Manager Crafton?
I was just gonna call the question, but if you're ready to move on, I'll withdraw that.
Okay, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on approving the agenda with the consent items moved to action items and the matters of public interest broken into two sections, one as item three and the other move to item seven I?
Mr. President, we can proceed to that roll call. I just, to clarify, I thought I heard Manager Cook make a motion to amend the motion by moving items seven H, I, and J to the top.
Manager Cook, is, was that your intent?
Yes, it was.
Do we, we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, with no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. Are there any other questions or comments before we move to the roll call vote? Hearing none, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
On approval of the agenda, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
No.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. So the next section, this would be for all matters of general public interest, except those related to items H, I'm seven H, seven I, and seven J on the agenda that are related to the Spring Road proposed project. Welcome to the board meeting. Anyone may address the board on any matter of interest in watershed. Speakers will be acknowledged by the president. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Additionally, additional comments may be submitted in writing. Generally, the Board of Managers will not take official action on items discussed at this time, but may refer the matter to staff for a future report or direct the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time?
Oh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, you, you, you know, I have something to say given that I am a member of the public.
Okay, it looks like we have another hand up out there, too.
I, I'm happy to yield to those, that, that person first.
President Siegler, I'm not sure Mr. Jacobs was here prior to the announcement of the splitting of the public hearing. I believe Mr. Jacobs would like to speak on the purchase, but.
He, I believe he's on mute.
No.
You're correct, my bad.
That's all right.
Okay, Manager Cook?
Uh, yes, I think the matter of public interest is the fact, the way that this agenda has been held and the, and specifically the fact that, you know, in my view, items seven H, I, and J were all listed. With what I can only surmise was an attempt to hide the ball as to actually what was going to happen. I believe that they were basically misleading by omission on that basis. So whoever was responsible for that, that's not the way to conduct business or provide information to the public. When I last looked at the documentation, there was no agreement attached regarding the assignment, et cetera. And there is, we've never had a situation of splitting a public comment period before. No notice has been gone, has gone out about a public comment period with respect to Spring Road or the acquisition of the property, which is the accurate description of those, that pertain to those items, seven H, I, and J. And therefore, I believe the board should reconsider the agenda. I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who has a comment not related to items seven H, I, and J? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is reading approval of the minutes. Do we have any motions regarding this matter?
I'll move the minutes of the September thirteenth meeting, or are we doing them all at once, but start there.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September thirteenth meeting, the regular meeting. Do we have any questions or discussions on this item? Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September thirteenth meeting as written. Can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, then we have the continuation of the September thirteenth meeting on September twenty first. Do we have any motions on this matter?
President Siegler, I'd like to move that we accept the continuation minutes from the September twenty third meeting with only one change. And that is line nineteen should read manager, M A N A G E R.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions, comments on the?
I'm sorry.
Manager Crafton?
Yeah, line sixty-two. It says, it sounds like Manager Cook is recommended. It should be either has recommended or is recommending. I think that is, that was all I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the approval of the continuation of the September thirteenth meeting on September twenty first? Can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
No.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is committee reports. The first item under committee reports is receive the Citizens Advisory Committee Report in minutes. I think we have a representative from the CAC here, is that correct?
President Siegler, Andrew Allers here from the CAC.
It is your, uh, Mr. President, managers and members of the public that are present, the Citizens Advisory Committee met on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. There were several motions that were had at that time. The first motion was involving the board recommendation that we commend the Board of Managers and the Watership, Watershed District on their community education and outreach. And we would also like to suggest that a climate resilient landscaping workshop be created to supplement the information and educational information that you're already providing. The workshop could encompass best practices for water quality, soil health, climate mitigation and adaptation, and homeowner responsibilities with regards to water quality. In addition, we were requesting the ability to look for information so that we could disseminate and educate the public as to best practices of providing information and notification to the appropriate individuals regarding bad practices of water quality that are seen as we go through that process. And then the second vote and motion for the CAC was that the CAC members requested and moved that the committee meet in public and in person. And that motion carried, and it's our intention to meet in person starting at our next meeting, which is October sixteenth. And lastly, we had requested that Administrator Jeffrey make a presentation and that presentation would be on the e-HAP presentation at that meeting on October sixteenth.
Thank you. Do any of the managers have questions or comments?
President Siegler?
Manager Crafton?
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer to attend that meeting October sixteenth.
Okay, good, that was on the agenda somewhere. Okay, yeah, that was the next item. Good.
President Siegler?
Manager Pedersen?
I think the idea of having some sort of an educational workshop on landscaping for climate resiliency is really an excellent idea. I know there's a lot of things on the, you know, staff's list, but I, I do think that's a very valuable thing to have maybe before next spring when people start planning over the winter and, and kind of get ready. I think it's a good idea.
Good. Any other questions or comments from the managers?
I, yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Well, maybe I misread the CAC minutes, but I was confused, I'm confused now whether you're doing in person, in person only, whether you're doing, what, what do you call it?
Hybrid.
Hybrid, you know, meetings or what? So please clarify what you agree to or going to be doing.
Mr. President, Manager Cook, the CAC motion was to commence in-person meetings and at those meetings, and that is, that is what was adopted. So we will be, our intention is if the, if the materials are present, we're going to go ahead and go, go through that process and we're going to run the meeting in person. And then at those meetings, we will then assess the ability to go with a, a not present bilateral meeting where a person can come on through the web. So we're looking at doing that, but right now the CAC, the intention is to go ahead and hold its meetings in person.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Uh, yeah, I, despite my earlier comments, I would like to suggest the CAC has to be able to consult with legal counsel regarding any position they might want to take regarding hybrid meetings, if any. My recollection is that there are certain minimum requirements to do so, and then I have a follow-up question. And that is, are you going to be recording your meetings?
Uh, Mr. President, Manager Cook, we had discussed the recording of meetings and a vote was taken. And we will not, the intention is not to record our meetings.
Is there a reason why?
The, the committee discussed it and felt at that time that the the presence of individuals proceeding, we haven't had our record meetings recorded, we have presentations recorded. So in the hopes that people would be candid and forthcoming and not worry too much about being recorded would allow for an open communication prime, and that was the vote.
Well, Mr. President, my last comment would be, it seems to be a little inconsistent to be able to say, well, we don't record it, people will be, you know, open and more, more forthcoming. On the other hand, you're not being open by not having it recorded and available to other people. So I think there's somewhat internal conflict in that in, in those two concepts, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on the receiving the Citizens Advisory Committee Report? I'll refresh my memory. Did we have a motion in a second to receive the Citizen Advisory Report?
We have not.
We have not. Do we have a motion?
I'll move acceptance of the reception of the Citizen Advisory Committee meeting minutes and report.
And I'll.
Okay, we all vote? Hearing none, can we have a roll call? All vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen? President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And that next item was to confirm the representative for the October sixteenth meeting and Manager Crafton has volunteered. If other managers want to join, that's okay. Is that correct? Do we notice it as a meeting in case we have a quorum?
Well, Mr. President, I, I, I suggest that we not have more than two managers attend any one meeting. Otherwise, I think the, uh, gets to be complicated. And secondly, I'm not interested in having any group of three managers make any, any decisions unless it's can be concretely agreed in advance that no action will be taken by the managers at those meetings if such a restriction even authorized under the book, and I would refer that question to Mr. Smith, notwithstanding my other comments.
Mr. Smith, do you have any comments on this matter?
Um, I think the first, the focus is that this is a meeting of the Citizen Advisory Committee, it's not a meeting of the Board of Managers. And whenever we have a quorum or more of managers that may attend someone else's meeting, we notice an abundance of caution that we provide public notice that, you know, there may be a quorum of managers attending the meeting, but it's very important that managers understand that they are there really in an observing capacity, and it's not a meeting of any committee of the board, and there is no you know, board member deliberation that should occur there. It's more a matter of being a liaison and connecting information, and that, that function is well served by one or two managers. So it is more complicated if a quorum or more wish to attend, but with a clear notice and clear instructions to the managers, I think it can be achieved. But there, it's also simpler to have just one or two managers attend.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I, I apologize. I just, you know, one comment, you know, I would, I would ask the CAC to reconsider thinking about, you know, reporting these meetings. I know they haven't, but it would give people an opportunity to see what's going on and and, and understand the issues being discussed. I'd be quite, I'm quite curious as to why anybody would be reluctant, you know, to, to have a discussion. I think it's just good public service to make our deliberations and discussions available to as many people who have interest in the matters that we discuss, whether it be at a committee meeting or whether it be at a or at the more to managers meeting. So I, I yield back.
President Siegler?
Thank you. Manager Crafton?
Um, I think that the minutes that have been taken are a really good indication of exactly what happens at those meetings. So having attended several and then seeing the minutes. So I, I think they're doing due diligence to communicate with us exactly what's going on already.
Mr. President, I, I hate to drag this out, but all due respect to Manager Crafton. You know, I have, I have no idea if the minutes, you know, accurately reflect what's happening. You know, the words are, are, as they say, one picture is worth a thousand words, and you have a recording, it's even worth more. So, you know, I re, I renew my suggestion that they seriously consider doing that, since almost every other, at least state agency, you know, at least does a recording, if not a video one. So you.
Okay, there's no vote required on this item, so I'm gonna move on to the next item, which is receive the Governance Committee Report. And there was no meeting held, so there's really no report. And I believe there's no required for a vote if there's no report. So the next item.
Excuse me, Mr. President, point and order?
Yes.
I thought, I thought there was an item on the govern, on, on the agenda of Governance Meeting in Minutes of the September twelfth meeting. Am I, am I wrong?
Administrator Jeffrey, is that correct?
Um, I do believe that we did not have the September twelfth minutes to the managers for the last. We did not meet on September twelfth. No, we've not meet, no.
President Siegler?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize. I am confused. I was looking at the audit and finance and. I was looking at the Audit and Finance and not the Governance, so I apologize.
Thank you. Manager Crafton, did you have a comment or no?
I, I was just going to point out that, that, that I thought that's what it was, the Audit and Finance Committee. On September twelfth.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Audit Finance Committee Report, receiving that. Do we have any motions on this item?
Mr. President, I move that we receive the Audit and Finance Committee Report.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the receiving the Audit and Finance Committee Report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Well, I'm, I, I'm, I'm curious to have some explanation regarding the item, the top of the second page, which is also the last page regarding the update on the per diem policy. Um, and, and it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me as the committee made any recommendations. And if so, on what basis are they making any recommendations?
President Siegler?
Yes, Administrator Jeffrey.
At this time, the Audit and Finance Committee has not put forward a resolution or any decisions. Um, that was just stating that if the Audit and Finance Committee wants to make a recommendation, they need a fair resolution and be put forward to the full board for discussion.
Uh, if I can follow on, Mr. President. Uh, it says, it says there on the first, second, third sentence, Manager Craft, Crafton motion to use the ten ninety-nine for, for moving forward, Manager Ball, second, this motion meaning it unanimous action, unanimous consent. I'm sorry, excuse me. So I'm wondering, was that motion actually adopted? And if so, what is the basis for determining or, or reaching the conclusion to use a Form ten ninety-nine?
President Siegler?
Manager Crafton?
I can defer to Administrator Jeffrey too, but, um, yeah, that was our sense of it, but we, um, we had not, we were gonna make a recommendation, but we were, our meeting was canceled. Um, Manager Javel was in Oregon this past week, so we didn't meet this week. And so we haven't, um, put it into a formal recommend, recommendation for the board yet.
Well, Mr. President, the question is, did you, did they or did they not make the motion and adopt the motion to use the Form ten ninety-nine? And, and my question is, if, if so, on what basis did they make that? Did they make that motion and approve it?
President Siegler, Managers. Um, that, that motion, the basis for that motion was the statewide survey, uh, and the, um, varied approaches that different watershed districts have taken, some using the ten ninety-nine and some using the W-two. And then the ancillary benefits that came as a result of going for a ten nine, with the ten ninety-nine approach.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Uh, I followed up, I've sent, uh, references to the apparent position of the IRS at forth on their website. Uh, that apparently the IRS takes the position that we are employees or at least for purposes of W-twos. And that, uh, compensation is to be reported on Form W-two. In light of that, it would seem to me that we would need to have some, um, some authority, uh, before we deviate from that and start using ten ninety-nines. And I'll go back to you, and I've said this before, I'll say it again. My mother always told me, just because one person jumps off the bridge, doesn't mean that you should. Applying it to this situation is, I don't care what percentage of watershed districts use ten ninety-nines or W-twos. There is, there is going to be an official position, one way or the other. And I would suggest that possibly the people at, um, at Minnesota Waters, maybe that should be one of their projects to actually uh, request a revenue ruling from the IRS regarding this, since it does affect, I don't know how many watershed districts that we have, uh, you know, in the state of Minnesota. So, uh, you know, thinking about it doesn't make it so, um, you know, wishes where horses beggars would ride, as they say.
President Siegler?
Manager Crafton?
So a couple of the points that we discussed was, um, it would expedite the processing of the, um, per diems quicker. It would also save us money. Um, so those were two of the things that were discussed. In addition to the survey and looking at how many other watershed districts were doing whatever. Um, so that, that was kind of the basis of where we were coming from.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
I think it's important to make this point, and it seems to me that all too often we're having managers make decisions based upon what they think is a good idea and ignoring what the law is. I think we need to find out what is the law. If there is no law on it, then that's one thing. If there is law on it, we follow it regardless of whether it costs us money or not costs money, whether it's simpler or more, more complex. And I'm sure as we've all heard it in the news, I don't think you want to run afoul, you know, of the law and the rules. And for those of you who don't get it, I get a feed, you know, uh, every day constantly about the people who are up on charges, you know, at the Minnesota Department of Revenue for not following the tax rules. Now hopefully this would not be such a situation, but it could be because reporting ten ninety-nines or reporting, uh, payments as ten ninety-nines as opposed to W-twos has multiple consequences. Uh, for one, ten ninety-nines, the recipient is responsible for self-employment taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And if it's W-two wages, the employer is responsible for half, the employee is responsible for the other half. So if we're W-two and we're treating it as ten ninety-nine, uh, basically you're cheating the government uh, on, on that basis. So I would recommend that before making a decision, we get as definitive an answer from authorities as we can and not just based upon, oh gee, it'd be great because we save money, or oh gee, it'd be simpler, or oh gee, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the, the watershed districts want to use something that's not otherwise authorized by, by law. And thank you, I yield.
Okay, um, obviously this will require a vote from the full board. Um, so I would like to, uh, go back to the, this is just receiving the Audit and Finance Committee Report. So, uh, I'd like to call our, uh, call the question, I guess, so we can vote on this.
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
So this was the motion to call a question?
No, this was simply the, uh, motion to accept the Audit and Finance Report.
Okay, thank you. Um, good. So that, uh, brings us to the consent agenda and all of the items were moved to action items. So we'll go through them one at a time. Um, the first one was, uh, item A, uh, Resolution twenty-three dash zero fifty-nine to, oh, that's to approve the consent agenda. We don't have to do that. The next one would, item B, uh, to accept, I'm sorry, receive the September staff report. Do we have any motions on this item?
President Siegler?
Manager Craft?
I move that we receive the September staff report.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the staff report?
Uh, Mr. President, I do.
Manager Cook?
Uh, so the, the first question I, I have, uh, deals with, uh, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I, was my place here. Uh, but what is our next meeting on, on the first of November, or is that delayed until some other later time?
Or, we pull up the calendar. Our next meeting, I believe, is on November's. Great, everything's in my way. Uh, next meeting would be November first, that is correct.
Well, if, if I understood the report correctly, that the furniture is not being delivered until November second, is that correct?
That is correct. President Siegler, Managers, I did speak with ABF, um, on Friday of last week. Um, he said that what is being delayed are the electronic components for it. So he was going to, uh, reach out to the manufacturer, see if he could get them sooner, then install those, and then would bring in the electronic for it on November second to install it. So, and he said, short of that, I will see if they have, we have something in our warehouse that would function the same, uh, as a half-round type table or something of that nature that could be used temporarily until such a time as.
But, well, Mr. President, if I can continue.
You cook?
Well, I, I suggest wait until we have everything in place, everything set up. And then look at which meeting we would then go to considering in-person slash hybrid. Um, uh, I can only tell you that I was waiting for a part on my vehicle that took over a month. And, and so I, you know, whatever supply chain is, you know, you don't know. So I would highly, you know, recommend that, um, that we, we proceed on that basis. If we had proceeded like that last time, we'd not, we'd be meeting in a place without equipment, right? Not mistaken. Uh, I want to bring up again on page two of the staff report, uh, what I believe it's imperative for, you know, our district to review our rules. And in time for the review of the member city local surface water management plans. And, um, I've been asking about that for some time. I think, uh, our rules uh, need to be looked at and revised. I think there's room for improvement, especially having to do with this a, you, you know, ecological health or, or whatever we call it, if we want to do something about that. Um, there's, there's room to make some amendments, but that all takes time. Um, having to give, uh, you know, appropriate notices of changes of rules. And I raised that again about changes of rules. The statute is pretty specific about having rules to govern our operations. And I feel that, uh, uh, inclusion would be is that we are lacking appropriate rules to govern most or much of our operations. And as far as I can tell, we only have, uh, formal rules having to do with permitting, which at my reading of the statute, does not limit rules just to permitting. Rules are to apply to everything with, I believe, the exception of bylaws, um, on that basis. So in any, if, in any event, my point is, uh, we should be moving forward with rules so that we're in the right place to be able to comment or require changes to any of these plans, because if I recall correctly, uh, there's a ten-year moratorium uh, on, uh, plan changes that, uh, if we adopt rules, we can't enforce changes uh, uh, on, or force cities to make changes to their plans, uh, except every ten years. Uh, if I'm wrong on that, I'm sure Mr. Smith can, uh, you know, um, enlighten us at a, at a later time, and now I'll, I'll move, uh, forward, um. I was quite concerned, uh, and, and I had been talking to, to Josh as well at the tour about apparently having found, and, uh, perhaps a, 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 uh, zebra mussel and EDNA in Lotus Lake again. And, uh, concerned with, um, you know, they need to do some testing to see if we do have an infestation. It wasn't clear to me, see, it says at Carver County did villager results, but it wasn't clear to me whether there was a, was zero um, villagers, uh, in any of our lakes or streams. And does anybody know the answer to that?
President Siegler, I will, uh, have Staff Maxwell respond with, that he's the one who's been working with Carver Colony on it.
Yep, uh, Managers, uh, Mr. Cook, uh, we, we, as the district, do villager sampling on all district lakes. Uh, we did not find any villagers on, uh, any lakes, but Lake Riley, which we expect with the level of infestation of zebra mussels on Lake Riley. Carver County also, uh, conducts villager sampling. And they found some on, um, Lake Anne, which is response, you know, which we'd expect to, well, actually, let me backtrack, just on Lotus Lake in the east lobe, they didn't actually find any on Lake Anne, um, which is good. So when we found the adult zebra mussels, uh, will be effective. It's just another kind of tally, hope, hope, you know, cross our fingers kind of deal.
Well, Mr. President, continue here. And, and so on that note, we found them on the east lobe. Are we contemplating any type of treatment to try to control any spread of any infestation?
President Siegler, Managers, no, just given the how long, um, we have had uh, EDNA test results in that lake, there isn't an area we can corner off and say this is the area we should zone. Even if we were to just do the east lobe, that's an extremely large area.
And what is the, you know, can you tell me what uh, our inspections, uh, was there, did we find some coming out of the lake or going into, I believe we found some before they went into the lake. Did we find any coming out of the lake? Can anybody refresh my recollection?
Coming out of the lake, uh, it was, that had been on the lake all year long. When it was coming out, it had a zebra mussel on it.
Yeah, the zebra, just to add to that, the zebra mussel was destroyed, so we couldn't confirm. But the inspector, uh, said it was a zebra mussel. Which would be the first, that would be the first adult that we've known on Lake, on Lotus Lake.
So we, we have the, uh, inspector just speak for, did we go and perform any inspection of the location where this boat was kept on Lotus Lake all year long?
So the district does, uh, since, uh, zebra mussels, since it was listed, the, the district does two kind of intensive scans of the lake. We completed one, uh, the, the area where the boat was in place that the inspector found those zebra mussel on. Um, we did not inspect that location, but then that happened after our first inspection. Now, when all the docks and lifts are getting pulled out, we go back and we do another inspection. I've have, I have that added, that location added to a kind of our search area now.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, my next question is, is it, can we, is there a database, uh, for the stewardship grant program?
President Siegler, Managers, yes, there is a database. It was my intent. Uh, and this Forbes is gonna find out about it right now, if she's here, that, uh, at the workshop, we would present that. And also, I would have Staff May on, discuss, uh, the activities that went around about Creek Week, um, last night's, uh, rain barrel. Quite well, so.
Well, it'd be interesting in, uh, in, in seeing what you're gonna present as a report and, uh, whether or not we can be including that report on a regular basis, particularly including, uh, follow-ups on stewardship grants, um, in, in the future years. So I hope that'll be included in the presentation. You know, I did have a question here. If you go to the top of page five, you were talking about district hydrology, hydraulics modeling, are we uh, looking at, uh, you know, given the fact that we've had such a dry year, are we, uh, are we using any of the rainfall events and then lake? are we using any of the rainfall events and then lake level measurements to try to uh, you know, what's the word, right word is to refine our, our flood modeling in any of these cities?
President Ziegler manager Cook, um, we have uh calibrated our model based on actual precipitation events. Um, I don't know where using drought would help us with a flood resilient model. Um, perhaps Engineer Solback has something he would like to add to that?
Managers, yeah, the only thing to add, like Administrator Jeffrey said, is the existing model. Um, the most recent one that especially that's been updated in Eden Prairie has been calibrated to actual rainfall events, stream flow gauge locations and lake level data for several different storms to calibrate the model. The most recent information that's been collected this year has not been incorporated into that model. Um, as Manager Cook pointed out, it's been a drought condition. And uh a lot of areas, there was not a lot of data to actually calibrate a flood resiliency model too. Um, but Staff Maxwell and uh additional folks are are working on collecting additional data, I think, going forward. Once we get additional rainfall events, larger rainfall events, or even moderate rainfall events, it's something that we can um look at to see how well the model would validate with those rainfall events at that time going forward. And lake level data and the stream gauge data, all of that information can be used again to continue to refine and validate moving forward.
President Ziegler, um, managers, just to clarify, there wasn't much data because there was no flow within the streams to collect data, not because we didn't have equipment out there or didn't make an effort to collect data. There just simply was no data to collect.
Well, Mr. President, just uh just last comment on that, yeah. You know, it seems to me the perfect opportunity to see if there is data you can use to validate, you know, runoff from hard surfaces as opposed to previous uh services and surfaces. And uh that's how you would be able to have some calculation of, you know, our hard surfaces and then as saturation levels increase or decrease, uh, you'd have some ability to make adjustments in the uh ultimate impact, at least. That's how I believe the scientific method uh would work. I'll move on now to education and outreach. The first item it has to do with the website. I've said this before, I'll say it again. Uh, my opinion, our website needs a lot of work. Uh, you know, references to governance. You know, I mean, takes us to governance, there's no, I think, efficient breakdown or or decision tree for the committees, et cetera. I find it almost impossible to find any minutes on the website, and I believe that is a requirement uh by Bowser. Um, and you know, as well as, uh, so I think there's a lot of work to be done on on the website. Uh, just to comply with the, with uh Bowser's rules. Uh, the second item having to do with uploading open sessions, uh, when I, when I went on there, there was no uh chrono, I could not see a chronological order to the uploaded open sessions. And that makes it very difficult, time consuming, to try to find a uh a recording of a particular session that you're looking for. And I would like to see that that issue are, you know, remedied. Um, I, I'd like to, you know, I think the fall tour was interesting. Um, I'm not sure where that leaves us on projects since we have lots of projects already on the uh on on the books for, for doing that. Um, I do have a question on uh, lake vegetation.
President Ziegler, now respond.
Uh, yes.
I'm going to share my screen, Manager Cook. And on this, if you go to the board page, you go to the top of every meeting, there are the minutes for that meeting. If you just expand the meeting, there are the minutes. Recordings are not required under Bowser to be available on the website, especially after minutes have been adopted. That's all. Thank you.
Well, first, first of all, I
Uh, Manager Cook, before we uh proceed, uh, we, obviously, we've got a time crunch. I think um with the, each of the reports, the staff report, engineer report, and all of the consent items, I'd like to limit the discussion to ten minutes. That should be enough. Um, you know, the report is there, it's written. Um, whether it's perfect or not, is uh probably none of them are perfect, but uh, yes, please proceed on the staff report, but let's keep it. Uh, this one, we've already been on for more than ten minutes, so let's try and keep it short, please.
Well, if there weren't so many, I, I appreciate that. If there weren't so many items to discuss, you know, it'd be a lot shorter and hopefully wouldn't have to discuss it at all. But I mentioned these things not so much for my benefit, but for the benefit are of our constituents, which is why I think that we're here. Uh, not to uh for us to sit here and read something uh, you know, by ourselves, but let, I'll, I'll finish, but um, I want to make one, um. Well, first of all, thank you for including comparisons of scores before and after work on various uh items. It's much better than having saying something was much improved. It's good to see the objective data. So I'll mention that while it's right in front of my eyes. The second thing I wanted to to note is that I forwarded to uh Administrator Jeffrey, apparently a report, I forget what the environmental source it came out of, but uh the fact that uh a good deal of our um uh greenhouse gases are being admitted actually by our water bodies and including not limited to wetlands. And I think that's important to consider. So and the reason I mention that is because I find myself, I'm reading some of these areas where we're eliminating wetlands and I'm saying, well, that's not very good. On the other hand, I think about, well, maybe we should be eliminating more of them because they are contributing at least fifty percent of the greenhouse gases. So I think that's something that, you know, we should be considering when we're deciding what kind of work uh we're going to do um going forward. I, um, yeah, let me say the, I'll just, I'll cut the, the last thing here. Um, is it true, as if I read it, that we are not finished with the Middle Riley Creek project? Is that still not done?
President Ziegler, managers, the project is substantially complete. There is still restoration ongoing and there will be for throughout uh twenty-four.
But are, are we, can we still not have everything recorded?
President Ziegler managers, we still have not had everything recorded. And we are, um, Engineer Sobak, myself and Mr. Walsh have met numerous times. We've got a long list of correspondence. Uh, I even offered at the last uh email to pick up Manager Ziegler, myself, and bring him over to there to get everybody in the same room to sign it. Um, there was no response to that.
Well, I think that gives us some lessons to be learned if we ever consider doing a project, uh, you know, with uh another private party. And we should seriously include provisions, including the ability to sign easements on behalf of the landowner if they refuse to do so within a certain period of time or include a provision to going to court with them and having them paying all the costs and expenses. This is, I think everybody would agree ridiculous that uh after this period of time, we don't even have the easements, et cetera, assigned and or reported um on on that basis. And 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 first of all, if we sent, and we sent actual letter correspondence from perhaps Mr. Smith and or the president to them telling them this needs to be done. And if we haven't, I suggest we do so. So we have, not that emails aren't sufficient, but sometimes a letter, um, you know, sometimes it's perceived to be more important or more official. Not that it should be, uh, so I highly recommend that. And with that, uh, I am finished. Thank you very much for your patience.
Do any of the other managers have any questions or comments on the staff report? President Ziegler. Manager Crafton.
At a later point, at some point, I would like to know more about um, is it discharge? Stormwater, the new thing that came out. Uh, what page was that? It was under TMDS. Uh, the new um NPDES, general construction stormwater pond or stormwater permit. At some point, it's not important right away, but I'd just like to have a better understanding of that. So that's all.
President Ziegler managers, I can compare no more on that. I need to study it myself anyway.
Okay, uh, any more questions or comments on receiving the September staff report? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on receiving the September, September staff report?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. So the next item on, on the agenda is receiving the September engineers' report. Do we have any motions on this item?
President Ziegler, I move we accept the September engineers' report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have questions or comments on uh the engineers' report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I, I have two, I have two comments. Uh, so first of all, ask to do on page six of seven. Um, so first question is, how many acres of forest do we have in the watershed?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. How many acres of forest do we have in the watershed?
President Ziegler managers, uh, that's something I don't know right off the top of my head. I'd have to pull up the GIS later and look at it.
Well, Mr. President, the reason I ask this is my question is, is I think we should know the scope of what we're dealing with before we start investing a lot of time in uh in, in something that may be uh so small as to at least not be worthy of our attention at this point in time, given the fact that we have significant erosion issues on at least two uh streams that we haven't uh, yeah, that we have, have it finished. So that was my, my point there. And um, my last question is, do we not usually get a, a bar, or a like a Gantt chart of our various projects and the status of them as part of the engineer report? Or do we get that as part of a different report?
President Ziegler?
Engineer Scott.
Manager Cook, um, I've been trying to include that more on a quarterly basis because the projects, the statuses don't change drastically from month to month. So I've been trying to do it quarterly.
But uh, uh, thank you for that information, I guess. Um, you know, if it isn't too much trouble, I think it would be nice just to have the report, you know, every month, you know, I have to go back and dig, dig around for it, but I, I leave that to you. It's just nice to be able to look at one snapshot every month and and see where we're at, even if nothing, if nothing has changed. That's just my preference. With that, I, I yield back. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions on the September engineers' report? Uh, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on accepting or receiving the uh September engineers' report?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the September regulatory report. Do we have any motions on this item?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton.
I'll move acceptance or receiving, receiving the regulatory program report.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, comments on the uh September regulatory report?
Uh, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, I, I just have a, a couple of, of comments. Uh, one, you, you know, it would be, it, it wasn't clear to me, but when you, on the first page, are the applications received, do they include those uh first three, are those are those a- applications re- re- received? Or is it only the first two?
President Ziegler, managers, that's a good question. With clarification sake, um, the permits received um are not included in permits executed down below. So we, we will separate that out um in the future to make that clearer.
I, I, I would, I would appreciate if we could provide that information on applications received, only because I think some of us might have some comments with respect to, you know, some of the applications, um, you know, if we, if we know about them, uh, you know, in, in advance. And then, um, similarly, if we, if we just, you know, get the same information on the permits closed out, um, hopefully that wouldn't be uh too much of a trouble uh to do that. And then my last comment is, is, um, I, I really, we need to, I think we need to move these uh, what's the NOPV mean again? Uh, non-compliance or whatever it is. There's some, you need to move these along toward resolution.
Yep, President Ziegler managers, no subproblem violation. Um, that's what the NOPV is. Um, some of them have been resolved. Um, we are focusing our efforts on those where there's imminent risk, uh horseshoe curb. We just had another violation. Make it in here. That just happened yesterday, so there's imminent risk to the lake. Um.
It, that, that, I, i- if you're finished, I, I, I understand that. And I mean, I, you know, it, you know, those that probably have the potential of the worst consequences be for first, but I, I don't think we can be remiss in the other ones. Um, and I'm sure you, you, you agree, you can't be remiss in those. And I, I had mentioned it before. Um, I think it would be somehow be able to get the information out to uh landowners again about the need to get permits and what. And I would, I'm going to assume that pretty soon Chan has and everybody's going to send out their latest and greatest uh uh newspaper, whatever you want to call it, their, their rag, as we use in the, in the uh, in the industry. And if we can get some, some uh, you know, print space on there to tell people, um, you need to get a permit and here's some examples and you know, click, you know, go to this UR, URL, or give them one of those uh, what do they call those things, little squares with all the dots and that, et cetera, that they can go and stick their phone on it and, and get a clip and, and maybe one to contact whoever they, they should contact directly on the, whether it's you, Administrator Jeffrey, or somebody else, but somehow, and then the reason I say this, one, I think it's a good service to provide, but number two, so people don't have an excuse, well, I didn't know, you know, nobody told me. And the more we, effort we make to educate the people, I think it would be better for them and better for us and less time consuming and better for our lake. So uh with that, I yield back. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the regulatory report? Hearing none, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on receiving the September regulatory report?
Manager Crafton?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to approve the final pay application number nine for the Sun Ram construction of Bluff Creek, Creek tributary restoration project. Do we have any motions on this item?
President Ziegler?
Uh Manager Patterson?
President Ziegler, I'd like to move that we approve the final pay app number nine to Sun Ram Construction for Bluff Creek Tributary Restoration Project.
Uh President Ziegler, a second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Well, Mr. President, if, if, if the email that, that, I'm sorry. I've got them. I started seeking.
Manager Cook?
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Um if, if, if the email is that the Administrator Jeffrey sent out still applicable, I would move to amend this resolution uh as, as follows, and I'll read it the best I can. Uh that the revised pay application provided by Administrator Jeffrey to the Board of Managers be inserted into the record of this meeting that upon Administrator Jeffrey's receipt of a revised recommendation from Bar Engineering and pay application by Sun Ram, the officers are hereby authorized and directed to cause the sum of $7,906.95 to be, to be paid to Sun Ram in full payment of such revised application.
Okay, I forgot who made the motion and the second, but uh
I'm fine with the friendly amendment.
Hey, Joe.
Thank you. Um so friendly amendment, is there any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Can I ask for a ten-minute break, please? For the good of the order, I think you call them.
Okay, well, we'll call a ten-minute break. My computer says it's eight fourteen. So that would be eight twenty-four. Well.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you. I see all the managers are back. Is Administrator Jeffrey back? I'm going to take that as a no.
Well, I'm back.
You're back.
I had three minutes yet.
Oh, you did. But I don't know, if, if we're all back, there's really no point in us all staring at the screen, waiting for the extra three minutes.
Uh, uh, Mr. President, since we told the public we were going to come back at twenty-four, or excuse me, eight, eight to twenty-four, I believe we should only tell eight twenty-four.
Okay, well, we've only got two minutes left now, so it's not so bad.
Can I ask a question then? Since the managers are here?
Well, we're not, we're not back in session.
Okay, uh my computer now says it's eight twenty-four. Um is Mr. Smith back with us too? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is uh approve permit twenty twenty-three dash zero two six Cathay Zupas. Um yeah, is there a presentation that goes with this, or it's, was a consent agenda, so?
Uh President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
Yes, I'd like to move on approval of permit number two zero two three dash zero two six with the um board action being what's laid out there on that we adopt the uh this resolution and that it's resolved that the application for permit two oh two three dash two zero two six is approved, subject to the conditions and stipulations set forth in the recommendations section of the attached report. Also resolved that on determination by the um administrator that the conditions of approval have been affirmatively resolved uh by, at the the Watershed District President or Administrator is authorized and directed to sign and deliver permit two oh two three dash zero two six to the applicant on behalf of the Watershed District.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh yes, thank you. Um well, first of all, I want to note, so we're, we're dealing with the uh nine point three seven acres of impervious. That's going to be, as I understand it, well, that I'm a little confused with some of the information. In one case, it seems like it's a decrease and other places I read where it indicates that there's an in, or maybe not a total increase, but a new or reconstructed impervious, which is, it, it's confusing to me um as to what we're, what we're dealing with. So I don't I don't believe any of the charts uh made it clear as to well, they're confusing on that basis. So uh so that's, that's kind of number one, but that's minor in the sense of uh you know, at the top of page five, indication about, you know, doing borings and groundwater uh elevations. And so one question I have for uh uh maybe it's Engineer Sobiak is, well, this being a dry year, uh are we certain that if we have normal rainfalls, are we, are, is the water table still below the, the minimum? Or in doing borings, is there something we do to determine what is the, you know, the normal, ordinary, you know, uh level of, of groundwater? So that's question number one.
Those Ziegler managers, um so within a soil boring, um they will also talk about the soil profile that they view. And in that, they will describe any redoxymorphic features. And these are features that will only occur under wet conditions, either constant inundation or periodic flooding or anaerobic activity becomes the uh main way of breaking down uh the metals in the soil. So in the absence of these redoxymorphic features, it is safe to conclude that there is no groundwater in that area. Now, if we had seen redoxymorphic features, and a rule is written such that the presence of redoxymorphic features is the same as seeing groundwater.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you for that. I have a, a, well, maybe it's not related question, actually, it isn't. Uh lower on page five discusses that the geotechnical report does not contain infiltration or hydraulic conductivity testing result. Result says the infiltration stormwater management facilities as required by Rule J subsection three point one point B, point two little i, point K, C. And yet, on on um page nine, under findings, it says proposed project includes the information necessary, plan sheets, blah, blah, blah for review. And it, it struck me at first glance that it's inconsistent. Is it inconsistent? And if so, which one should be changed? Engineer Sobiak?
Manager Cook, um we, we do have enough information to make determinations and findings. The requirement to provide infiltration testing is to the way it's written in this report would be required during construction such that we verify the infiltration capacities of these soils.
So you're saying that so where does it say that that's information to be provided? How does that get tied into the findings and recommendations?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, the requirement to collect infiltration testing information is on page ten, um item number five underneath stipulations. And all of the items underneath stipulations are things that are needed to be provided during construction or prior to permit closeout and return of the financial assurance.
Okay, thank you for that. And then um I, I don't quite understand item number two under findings. Um and, and, and I guess where I'm coming from is um it says if the rules, it, it'll conform if the rules, but where does it say that you have to comply with the rule-specific permit conditions? Maybe I just glanced through it. I'm not familiar, as familiar with these as you are. Can you tell me where we track that into the recommendations, acceptances?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, um in the findings, we, we, we make the statement it will conform if it complies with the rule-specific permit conditions listed above. And then underneath recommendations, rather than referencing things back up to the above, we simply restate those uh requirements, those permit conditions underneath recommendations. So it's crystal clear, once you get to the recommendations, these are the things that you need to do. these are the things that you need to do.
Well, I don't want to get in an argument, I'm, I'm not sure it was crystal clear to me, so you know, perhaps I'm just, you know, I'm stupid, which probably a few people would say that that's the case, but I might ask if maybe that be relooked at, you know, in the future. Make sure that it is crystal clear even to somebody of my limited abilities, so that's all I have, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on approval of permit twenty twenty-three dash zero two six? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on permit twenty twenty-three dash zero two six?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson? Andrew Patterson?
Sorry about that, yes.
President Seigler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that brings us to the approval of permit twenty twenty-three dash zero fifty-six. The Kinsley Development as presented in the board packet, do we have any motions on this item?
Mr. President, I believe we have item G, permit twenty twenty-three oh five five.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that one. Do we have any motions on approving permit twenty twenty-three dash zero fifty-five?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
All right, I will move permit twenty twenty-three dash zero five five. Resolved that the application for permit two oh two three dash zero five five is approved, subject to the conditions and stipulations set forth in the recommendation section of the attached report. And resolve that on determination by the Watershed District Administrator that the conditions of approval have been met. The Watershed District Administrator or President or Administrator is authorized and directed to sign and deliver permit two oh two three dash zero five five to the applicant on behalf of the Watershed District.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions on permit twenty twenty-three dash zero fifty-five?
Mr. President?
Andrew Cook?
I wasn't sure, but am I, I correct that they're eliminating a number of wetlands? Maybe I'm a little confused, and replacing them with infiltration basins?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, for this permit in particular, the Ridgewood Ponds, they are not proposing to eliminate wetlands. There is one wetland, wetland number three, where the city of Minnetoka has allowed them to, through their WACA authority, has allowed them to excavate out six inches of material from the wetland, but the wetland will still be there.
And so, I guess what are the is there any, and maybe I'm confused looking at them, is there like one property located on that piece of property right now, one building?
Correct, there is one house, one residential house.
And looked like maybe another shed or something, if I saw the saw the drawing correctly. Well, you know, the reason I, I pull this is, is basically comment and and bring it up for consideration relative to I'm gonna see the discussion having to do with the Noble Hills project, and it seemed to me, the question would be asked, well, why aren't we buying this piece of property? And we could be saving a wetland and preserving properties surrounded on almost what, three sides, almost four sides, you know, with, with water resources, et cetera, and so I bring this up to point out that in support arguments I'm gonna make regarding Noble Hills, so that's all I have to say on this project.
Are there any other questions or comments on approval of permit twenty twenty-three dash zero fifty-five? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Seigler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the next item, I believe, is now the permit twenty twenty-three dash zero fifty-six. Kinsley Development. Do we have any motion on this item? Manager Crafton?
Nobody else is. Somebody else started to speak. I move acceptance or approval of permit number two oh two three dash zero five six. Resolved that the application for permit two oh two three dash zero five six is approved, subject to the conditions and stipulations set forth in the recommendation section of the attached report. Also resolved that on determination by the Watershed District Administrator that the conditions of approval have been met. The President or Administrator is authorized and directed to sign and deliver permit two oh two three dash zero five five to the applicant on behalf of the Watershed District.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on permit twenty twenty-three dash zero fifty-six. Do we have any questions or comments on this permit?
Yes, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to point out that on page nine and findings number two, I think is a little different than what we've had on the other permit request, but not to go into detail at this point, but only to suggest that perhaps it would be beneficial to make sure that, that there be a template. If there isn't one, having to do with, you know, general requirements, findings, recommendations, et cetera, yeah, so that we can more or less perform a checklist of, you know, make sure we have the right references, et cetera, so that's my comment with respect to the document, but my, my I think more important to this is the fact that we're squeezing in all of these units on a piece of property. A with, and with, with all the additional impervious surfaces, I don't even know how this gets approved. With, with what appears to be as little impervious as there is, I don't see how this gets approved, but anyhow, if it gets approved by the city, that's, that's up to them, but we're voting to approve this, it seems to me that we've decided our rules are sufficient to protect our, our water bodies, et cetera, run up and perform all of our, you know, attend to all of our concerns, which we've expressed in our rules, so I just wanna point that out, and the fact that we're going to be, again, squeezing all of these properties onto something that looks like it has one or two buildings at all. Existing barn, house, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to, to read the detail, so we're letting, we're taking away all this pervious, putting impervious in substituting water retention facilities, et cetera, to protect the streams, and if we approve this, we're saying that's okay, that's all we need to do. So those are my comments, with that I yield.
Thank you, Engineer Sobiak, do you have any comments?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, your interpretation of the existing conditions out there is correct, it's a house with a barn. So that's good, and yes, they are squeezing in forty-two townhomes onto this, this parcel with a fair amount of imperviousness, and with the application of the rules and complying with the various provisions in the rules, they will be providing the water quality protection that meets the water quality, rate control, and volume extraction that meets the requirements.
I didn't know, Mr. President, if I could just continue, I wasn't, and I apologize, I only have so much time to attend to these items, was there any wetlands on this, it didn't look like it, can you confirm there were not wetlands, or?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, there were three very small wetlands on the site, but they do not meet the definitions defined in the rules as a, as a water body, because they don't have a definable bank. So that's why the wetland buffers and floodplain didn't come into play.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on permit twenty twenty-three dash zero fifty-six? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Seigler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero six zero, proving watershed stewardess stewardship grant with Hackmore Brewery in the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Do we have any motions on this item?
Go ahead.
I'll move that we approve resolution twenty-three dash zero six zero for Hackmore Brewery for their installation of pervious pavement patio native plantings, and I'm happy to see that it is a very highly visible area right on the other side of our office, so I think this is a really great project.
President Ziegler, a second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any questions on approval of this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
One moment, please. I'm just waiting on the internet. I don't know why it's taking so long to load, but we'll see here. Well, my first I don't know when the rest of the documentation was loaded, but when I went to this their site originally, the only thing that was on there was the resolution, I've already brought up the fact that I think several times, if we're gonna add anything or change anything, we need to be notified. As a result, I haven't had opportunity, you know, to review this, and I think we need to look at all the information needs to be on there on the date that it's published, or affirmatively make sure we notify if any other items were were added after the fact, I mean, I specifically downloaded the document and all I, all I received was the as I said, was the resolution and not the, not the document, so I have issues approving this.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments on resolution twenty-three dash zero six zero? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Seigler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, that brings us to the new business, I believe, is that correct? No?
We still have item J, resolution twenty-three oh six five.
Okay, so somebody's gonna have to tell me about that one, when I, the agenda, item J wasn't on.
President Ziegler, Managers, this was, Manager Crafton had brought it up to me that she would like to attend a Water Resources Conference, since it isn't explicitly listed as one of the events that managers can go to, I put together this resolution, we do have, I believe we have adequate funding within the manager per diem and expense fund account. If not, we do have other funds that we could transfer the monies over from, but if, if we are adequately up to date on per diem requests for the year, we should have adequate funding in this for all managers to attend both days, including per diem and parking.
Do we have any motions on this item?
President Ziegler, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero six five, authorizing the expenditure funds, so up to five managers can go to the Minnesota Water Resources Conference.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any questions or comments on this resolution?
Great, I won't be there. So you saved yourself one person two days.
So I, I won't be there either, but I'm interested to learn about it, I just have other things I'm committed to do.
Yeah, me too.
Any further comments or questions before we vote? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on approving resolution twenty-three dash zero six five?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yeah.
President Seigler? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, I think that now brings us to the new business, is that correct? Okay. So the first item on the new business is to receive the September Treasurer's Report. Do we have any motions on this item?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I'm gonna ask that we not do that at this point, there are some discrepancies, now I, I went through everything using our internal controls procedures and policy, and tied out everything for paying the bills, but as we've tried to move to a different format, I found some discrepancies. I can I still get a copy of the old internal report, and that, that tied out well, but there was one error, or two errors, and I think they're just cells that probably did the addition, but I would like to make sure that this is corrected, and since we didn't have an audit finance committee meeting this past, or this week, I wasn't able to bring that up and have more scrutiny added to it, so at this point, I'd like to delay that until next meeting, and I'd be glad to go ahead and make a motion to approve paying the bills, because that, I've tied out all of those things, receipts to to what we've agreed to pay in the checks, so.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approving payments?
Table.
Oh, first table, okay. We have a motion table, the receiving the Treasurer's Report.
For September.
Can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Oh, Mr. Crafton? Excuse me, point of order.
Manager Cook?
Uh, I believe even, even a motion to table has a comment. They got commentary period.
Okay.
Motion to table is non-debatable, Mr. Chum.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DeVal?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
No.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
So do I need to do another motion to pay?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to move that we approve paying the bills.
I'll second.
So that's resolution, uh, twenty-three dash zero sixty-one. Do we have any questions or comments on? Uh. Adopting the resolution to pay the bills?
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Uh. First thing I'll mention is that, uh, there's no provision. For paying me, uh, interest and or penalties on the failure to pay me my per diem. With the time prescribed by. Law and I'm hereby demanding payment of the interest and penalties. In accordance with applicable law. As well as the failure to pay the other, uh, payments, uh, set forth on my. Uh, claims forms. And I also note that, uh, I have sent the request asking for the information regarding. Payment or non-payment of the amounts put forth on my claims forms and I have not received that. Uh, and certainly not in a timely manner.
Okay, any other questions or comments on, uh, resolution twenty-three dash zero sixty-one? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
And President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is. Uh, Mr. Jeffrey. Correct me if I'm wrong to consider permit twenty twenty-three dash zero one two.
That is correct. The variance request, so from rule B floodplain first and then, uh, the next item will be to continue. Will be to consider the permit as well.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments on the variance request for this permit? I'm sorry, did we get a? Forget a motion and a second. Okay. I was ahead of myself. Do we have a motion on this, uh? To consider the permit variance request? Okay, I'll move to, uh. Consider permit twenty twenty-three dash zero one two. Autobahn Business Report. Business Park variance request from Rule B floodplain for placement. Uh, of fill within the floodplain.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um. Do we have questions or comments or does Administrator Jeffrey or Engineer Sobia? Want to walk us through this variance?
Ziegler and Managers, I will share my screen unless you want to. Engineer Sobia, I believe Engineer Sobia does have a presentation, um, to go through this.
I will share my screen. Managers, what you have before you with this development is a, uh, it's located just south of. Highway five to the west of Autobahn. Um, north of Colteer. A little bit of project background information to get the managers a little bit more information here. Um, it's a twenty-eight acre site. Uh, there's currently nothing on this site other than a, a extension of McGlenn Road and the cul-de-sac. They're looking at constructing two commercial buildings with associated streets. Uh, parking, utilities, stormwater management. There are six wetlands currently on the site. I have them labeled here on the. The image, the development image. Uh, two of those wetlands, wetlands one and two, one is in the far northwest corner. Number two is in the, called the north central area. Three, wetland three is closest to Autobahn. Wetland four is in the middle of the site. Wetland five is a little bit to the west and then wetland six is a little bit to the south. Two of those wetlands, one and two, uh, will be preserved. Uh, with wetland buffers provided that meet the criteria. Four of the wetlands, wetlands three, four, five and six. Will be filled and replaced under the Whacker Replacement Plan approved by the City of Chanhassen. There are six stormwater. Best management practices proposed for this site. Uh, one stormwater wet detention pond and five. Infiltration basins. Uh, the site will result in, uh, significant increase in imperviousness as you can expect from going from essentially. Little bit of street to fully developed, roughly eighteen acres. Of imperviousness will be created with this project. In terms of compliance with regulatory program for the floodplain. Rule, Rule B, uh, the project is not in compliance and they are asking for variance from compensatory storage within the floodplain of the same water body. For rules, uh, C, D. J, K, L and M, they will be in compliance if they meet the rule specific, uh. Conditions recommended in the, the permit. Um, as typical, when we go through the variance requests, I'll move on and look closer at the variance request itself. Um, remind the managers of Rule K, which details out the variance criteria. Uh, those criteria for the managers to consider. And the unique conditions inherent to the subject property are how substantial the variance is from the, for rule provisions. The effect of the variance on government services. Whether the variance will substantially change the character of. Or cause materially adverse effect to the water course, water resources, flood levels. Drainage or general welfare in the district or be substantially detrimental to neighboring properties. Whether the profit, practical difficulty can be alleviated by a technical measure. How the practical difficulty occurred. And in light of all the above factors, does the variance serve, uh, in the interest of justice? So if we look again, just, uh, reiterate what's proposed, um. For variance, they're looking at a variance from Rule B subsection. Three point two, which requires compensatory storage be provided. Within the floodplain of the same water body or same water resource feature. Uh, because wetlands three, four, five and six. Will not be there because they are essentially building one of the buildings over the top and pavement over the other. Wetlands, um, those floodplanes don't exist, so they're asking for variance to provide compensatory storage elsewhere on the site. The project will involve, uh, seven hundred and seventy-nine cubic yards of fill. And eight thousand three hundred and twelve cubic yards of compensatory storage below the respective one hundred year flood elevations. Uh, in the table that I'm showing here, I break it down between wetland three. Which the compensatory storage is provided for and infiltration basin four. And I combined wetlands four, five and six because they all drain to the next downstream resource, which is wetland one. And the fill that's proposed in those three wetlands. Is being offset and significantly more compensatory storage added in. The NERP. Wet detention basin or infiltration basin one. The next couple of criteria I lumped together, um, the, the effect of the variance on government resources and will there be substantial? Change of the character or cause material adverse impact to water resources. Uh, because the project will reduce. The site discharge. Volume and rate. The site. Relative to existing conditions, which we discuss in the actual report itself, rates are going down under proposed conditions relative to existing. Project is not reasonably likely to cause offsite adverse impact. Because the project involves a net increase in storage below the one hundred year flood elevations of the existing wetlands being filled. The proposed alterations are not likely to adversely affect governmental services, water resources. Flood elevations or the neighboring properties. The proposed variance only impacts the applicant's property. Whether the practical difficulty can be alleviated by technically or economically feasible methods. Other than the variance, uh, the measures incorporated into the project to alleviate the practical difficulty include. Creation of compensatory storage volume in the wet detention basin and five infiltration basins. To comply with the regulatory requirements. It's just not in the same floodplain because those floodplanes are gone because the wetlands themselves are gone. Uh, routing the developed. Site runoff to the proposed stormwater management facilities will allow the runoff to be stored in the facilities, resulting in reduced discharge rates. As summarized in the rate control analysis. The wetlands will no longer exist. So the compensatory storage cannot be provided within the same flood, same water body. How the practical difficulty occurred, uh, the applicant has created the circumstances leading to the variance. Though it did so with the approval. Of the, the city of Chanhassen, who is the LGU for administering the Wetland Conservation Act. So to wrap that all up, uh, because the project increases flood storage below the one hundred year flood elevation of wetlands three, four, five and six, which the LGU is allowing to be filled. The engineer finds that there is adequate technical basis for the managers to rely on to grant the requested variance. Um, I also added in here, uh, based on, uh. Past discussions that the board has had. To offset the loss of some of the wetland and floodplain functions. We're recommending that the applicant revise the design of the wet detention basin. To promote and establish a wetland characteristics. There any questions?
President Ziegler?
Manager Craft?
So I can't in good conscience, um. Approve this variance, um. We're supposed to be doing compensation storage within the same floodplain. And I think there's a greater issue now with, with climate impacts in terms of. Um, the interests of justice because. We need to be allowing more infiltration and, and have a working hydrology that will help to. Recharge our, our aquifers if nothing else. So I just, it's one more step toward. Deviating from what the protection is supposed to be. We're, the next one, the next. Item on our agenda is, is Core Trust Bank and from my, from everything I can glean from that situation. The reason that everything's. Falling in there is because they built on a wetland. And so, I, I mean, I realize they're gonna fill this, but I think. I think they're gonna be hydrate soils underneath this and it's gonna cause probably similar, similar situation, so. I, I just think it's time to draw a line on the fact that. We need to be following the protection for our wetlands. Um, and with three of them here altogether, you, you're really. Changing the hydrology quite a bit.
Well. Manager Cook?
Yeah. So, let me s. See if my summary is correct. But we're removing some wetlands. We're increasing. A. Infiltration pond. To handle. The infiltration, is that correct? That we would have had? If there was no building, is that correct, Mr. Sobia?
This is your manager cook. The, in the five infiltration basins have been sized to abstract, uh. Zero point five five inches of runoff off of the entire site.
And so, um. It's, so, so we, we've done that, we've replaced those. The real issue is the fact that, uh. As you define floodplanes having to be different elevations, correct, that are. Another reason there's different floodplanes is because these are different elevations, correct, than the same parcel?
Different, uh, Manager Cook, different elevations and different water bodies.
Yes, I mean, each water body has its own elevation and they're not connected in that regard. I mean, maybe under the ground, I don't know, but. Uh, uh, on that basis, so. Um. So it seems to me that if your analysis is done correctly, um, that we're providing the same. Infiltration requirements, you know, that we have. If those are our rules, then those are our rules and, um. You, you know, we, we don't, we don't have the. I think to be able to, to say that it's not within the same floodplain is a minor issue, given the fact that. Um. You know, the LGU gets to decide whether the, the wetlands get to be taken out at all. And if I're under Whacker, right, it's three X, you know, you take out one and you gotta put in three, is, am I correct?
Manager Cookie, it'll be depend on the, the wetland functions and values, but typically, yes, it's either a two to one replacement or a three to one replacement.
Okay, on that basis, and so there's satisfying those applicable requirement, or at least the LGU has decided that this does that. Is that correct?
That, that is for the LGU's determination.
But apparently they've made some decision on that, on that basis.
Correct. Correct.
And we, we don't have jurisdiction having to do with the wetlands. We're not the LGU in this case.
That is correct. City of Chanhassen is the LGU for the Wetland Conservation Act.
And in, anything in our rules say that have anything about. Testing to have, well, but this, you're saying we, we're gonna, are you saying that we're gonna have the same infiltration? Capacities that we would have had if the wetlands were left alone?
Uh, managers, that, that information is not a requirement to evaluate as part of the regulatory program. So the applicant hasn't provided infom- information on the existing infiltration capacity. Of the existing wetlands, um, so therefore we do not look at that as a, a criteria.
So our only infiltration requirement is to meet whatever that rainfall now captured and put it in the ground within a certain period, period of time, is that right? Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, on, on that basis, so. It, it, it doesn't seem to me that we have a sufficient. I mean, we've, uh, granted other, you know, variances in, in. These, uh, points and I think that, uh. We're getting. I mean, the fact that they can eliminate the wetland, they can eliminate the wetland. And, uh, the only difference is of being in one location versus another. And so, um. What, what kind of, uh, and you've said that we're requesting. That the infiltration pond be designed in such a way as to. Is it the word mimic some of the wetline characteristics? Or am I putting words in your mouth?
What? Similar to, uh, Manager Cook Managers, uh, one of the, the recommendations that I'm making is that the applicant revise the design such that the wet detention basin. Um, is, is designed to promote and establish more wet. Is, is designed to promote and establish more wetland characteristics to try to replace some of those functions that are lost through the wetlands that are being filmed.
Can we, can we enter our rules? Can we require that?
President Ziegler, managers, be- because this is a, a variance, um. I think the managers have a little bit of discretion. Uh, there's nothing in the regulatory program that requires. The replacement or. Pushing towards wetland characteristics in a stormwater BMP.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do any of the other managers have questions or comments?
President Ziegler.
Manager Patterson.
This is another of those really tough decisions that we have. To make, um. You know, the fact we don't have WACA authority. Takes that decision out of our hands. And I'm still looking at filling up a space with a lot of impervious surface. Filling in. Uh, seven hundred and eighty-five cubic yards. Of fill on that site. I just. How many more of these are we gonna see? You know, and, and to think that they have no adverse impact beyond the piece of property they're on. Uh, it, this is a very difficult decision. If you're following it strictly by. What we've, um, enforced and done before. Uh, but at some point or another, we, how many more of these are we gonna see? I, I just. I'd like to hear from the other managers to see what they think.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager, I'm sorry. Manager DeWalt, do you have anything to add?
I guess the. I agree with manager Peterson and. Manager Craft that, uh, these, these are getting into the puzzles that we're all trying to deal with now and. So I'm, I'm trying to understand, so the, the reason for the variance is that it. Or, or the, the workaround for the variance is what has been suggested by the engineers. So. From a technical point of view. The project is in compliance, is that correct? Is this?
No.
President Ziegler, manager DeWalt. Um, from a technical perspective, uh, the, the proposed design is not in compliance. With the regulatory language because the floodplain storage is not in. Adjacent to the same floodplain that is being filled. And that's why they had to request a variance.
But the, but the variance, the, the technical aspect of the variance is to mimic. The way the ground was before, is that correct?
President Ziegler. Managers, I, I apologize, Scott, um. It is to mimic the storage. And, uh, hydrology and rates, it is not meant to replace all functions and values of the wetlands that were on site. So we only look at those two functions of the wetland. It's storage and it's discharge. And they replace that. But any of the other functions, no, are not replaced by what's being put back.
So, so would you have any notion of how the, the city or the LGU? Allows this project to go forward is, do they not look at this at all?
President Ziegler, uh, managers, so we are a member of the. Technical evaluation panel, the TAP. Um, we are not a voting member of the TAP, we are just a, a, um. Advisory member. In my conversations with the Water Resources Corps of the City of Chanhassen. He was not overly thrilled with this, but the TEP recommendation was. Remember that the Wetland Conservation Act does not provide a permit to fill a wetland. It is a permit to approve a mitigation plan. So, um, while it seems like semantics, it's actually a pretty big deal, especially when. Replacement can be done anywhere within the same bank service area. Which may be outside of. Our county, our watershed district, might even be outside of the lower Minnesota River watershed and so. There, so we are just looking at technically if it meets. Our criteria that we set forth. Uh, but we do not look at whether or not they've replaced all of the functions and values that are being lost by the filling of the weapon.
So I'm still, I guess.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Finish.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm still confused as. The variance is. Is working. Towards. Balancing some technical component. With not meeting the rules. So I, I guess I'm still confused as to. How the, how this, uh, variance, um. Deals with. The rule not being met.
So s- direct application of the rule would be. We feel part of the water body and we're gonna mitigate for that volume on this other part of the same water body. But since that water body no longer exists. We, engineer Solbiak and, and Council Welch have, have reviewed it and determined that. That same compensatory storage is provided for on the site. But it is not compliant with. The rule that says it must be on the same water body.
Mr. Go ahead, uh, manager DeWalt.
All right, I go, you go ahead.
Well. When, when I, you know, th- this is talking about. Technical. Uh, in technically impractical. To, to deal with this. And. Uh, you know, they're gonna. Build this building and. The LGU has already said you can take these out. So I think there's an argument. There's, there's no flood, there's no floodplain, uh, to even deal with because per the LGU. They're gone. You don't even have to worry about those. And so once they take those, I mean, I think the argument goes, once they take those away, then we're left to. Um, are they providing the same amount of abstraction and, you know, and infiltration? In order to meet our rules and if I understood everybody. Uh, correctly, they're saying yes, that by putting in these ponds are, they're meeting our rule of abstraction. And infiltration and the only little piece. Uh, I'm not trying to, to minimize the little piece, but the little pieces. Are they providing in the same floodplain? Well, the point is, is there is no more floodplain. Once the LGU has said. They go. You don't even have a floodplain to deal with. And I think it's, uh. I don't think it's a sufficient basis to deny a variance considering the fact. That I believe they've met, you know, all of the. Uh, you know, substantially all of the. Criteria that we list for granting. A variance and I think not to grant a variance. Um, i- is. You know, it would be arbitrary and capricious, giving, you know, our prior acts and I realize arbitrary and capricious gets to be. A nebulous concept when you're dealing with variances, but. That as aside, it seems to me. If they're, you know. Where they're meeting all of our rules, the only little thing is this floodplain, I don't think it's a sufficient basis to. You know, deny them. Uh, a variance, because I actually think the floodplain goes away because effectively the LGU has said, sorry, bye, it's gone. Uh, you don't even have a, you don't even have one to, to deal with. So a little bit chicken and egg. So. Um, I don't think there's a sufficient basis to. You know, deny the variance, especially in line of variance that is, that we've denied. Especially given the fact that, uh, you know, we've approved. Permits where we've, you know. Basically paved over the entire, um, spot and, uh, you know, stuck everything into these. Underground, you know, storage facility. So. Um, I don't think it'd be a very firm leg to, to stand on and. I would say if they're willing to add some. Wetland characteristics to this pond. Um, I think that would be, y- you know, the most. That would be a good solution. Cool. That, that's all I have to say on that.
President Ziegler.
Commander Peterson.
So I'm also very concerned about the fact, the only thing they're really doing here is putting down a seed mix. I mean, I don't see any trees, I don't see any native vegetation. They're putting down a seed mix, that's the only thing I saw from all of it. I, I, I don't see any effort on their part to. Try to make this huge thing they're putting on this little piece of property. Uh, you know, in any way of, of better solution. There's an awful lot of impervious surface on this piece of property, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Well, uh, you know, the manager Peterson just reiterates what I said, we just previously in this meeting. Approved almost literally wall-to-wall impervious surfaces on several sites. And you, I don't think you can go and. You know, toss this one, you know, and let the others do that as well. I mean, they meet our rules. Our rules are our rules. If we don't like our rules, as I've said probably at every meeting. Since the beginning of January, then change the doggone rules. But until we change the rules, they're entitled to the benefit of our rules. And even though we have latitude with res- some latitude with respect to variances, we can't be totally arbitrary and capricious and I think we have. And that means we have to be consistent. And as I said. Y- you know, they're putting in more than what there is now. And it's not practi- I don't see any practical way of. Of dealing with this, this looks like this is an industrial site zone place. Don't think they're gonna be putting in, in houses and make their way around those, those. So I, I think, I think we're actually getting a good deal. Yeah, it'd be gr- uh, if, if they're willing to go and. Make it better and make it more like a wetland, et cetera, that'd be great. You know, and I wish they do it, but as I understand it, we don't have any basis to make them do that. And if we don't have any, you know, I mean, I think we have the same question with what was it there? Um, uh, wh- what was the utility company that's put in that big building on that lot?
Excel.
Okay, that's the same deal. It's the same deal. So how are we going to say, okay, guys, go ahead on Excel and do basically the same thing? But tell this. This landowner, this, the, this company that wants to develop, no, you can't do it. I think that's wholly inconsistent. And, and we should. Make the best of it by having. At least requesting that they do a better job, just like we requested of Excel. I don't know if they've done anything else. But at best we can request it. I don't think we can require it. And, uh, and I, I think they would have grounds to say we're being, being arbitrary and I don't see any reason to be arbitrary. Because as I said before, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but the LGU rightfully or unfairly. Made the decision which I believe effectively eliminates. The whole floodplain issue.
So I think we should, uh, get a motion and, uh, vote on this. It doesn't seem like we're gonna get any further with discussion.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
Yeah, I wanted to point out one thing, so. On page fourteen, uh, under. That paragraph under the last bullet there. Um, the engineer recommends the applicant revise the design of the wetland, wet detention basin to promote and establish wetland characteristics. That is not part of the deal. I mean. Our engineer is gonna recommend, but there's nothing to. They don't have to do that. It's not part of the deal.
So do we have a motion to approve the variance or to not approve the variance? We need to.
Mr. President, there's a motion before the body made by you and seconded by. Andrew Peterson.
To approve or deny variants? To approve the variants?
I thought it was just to consider the permit.
Yeah, I think we talked about consider, I don't think we. Made a motion to approve or deny the variants.
May we have your opinion on this?
Yep, it's my point. Um, by and large. Um. The only rule we violate. Or this violates. Is one that we've, uh, allowed variances for many times. I do agree though that the, um. Engineer statement to make it. Uh, mimic wetland characteristics. Is something that we could. Uh, do more than. Uh. You know, we could request that they redo it. And, uh. You know, add trees. And, um, other vegetation. Uh, rather than just a seed mix. Um. But it, you know, it, it doesn't, it's pretty thin. To. Just flat out. Uh, deny the variants.
So, Mr. President. Could, could we, could we add that to an amendment to the variants?
Mr. Smith, I think we have some latitude. For freedom to do that, is that correct?
Uh. Yeah, m- Mr. President, um. There is authority within the board in approving a variance. To exercise some discretion. I think the closest. Place to address the item that you're talking about. Um, follows the engineer's second. Recommendation in which the applicant is. Um. Engineer recommends the applicant revise the design. More than establish white line characteristics and then in the same spirit it would be to. Uh, enhance the vegetation restoration on the site or something that meets your intent there.
Uh, so, and it, Mr. President, I'm gonna call the question, but first I want to understand what the question is. What, what's the question before? Is it, Mr. Smith could? Um. Uh, what's the word illuminated?
Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
I, I believe there's confusion about the questions before the body. Um, I understood it to be a, a motion to. Uh, grant the variance based on the staff reporter recommendation, but I do recall that President Ziegler used the word consider. Um, and I think he was following the language of the agenda item. In putting forward the motion, so. I'm not sure what a motion to consider the item, um, what significance that would have. So I think there is confusion about what the motion is before the body and maybe we can ask the makers to clarify that.
So I'd like to make a motion to. Approve the, uh. The variance, um. For permit twenty twenty-three. Dash zero one two. With, um. Improvements or, you know, requests that the, uh. Permit applicant key. Includes more. Uh, vegetation. And more detail on how they're gonna make the, uh. Uh, infiltration basins, uh, mimic. Uh, wetland characteristics.
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Um, hopefully we can keep our discussion pretty quick. We've talked about this a long time. But what, do we have any other questions or comments on? The motion?
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
All right, based on the variance exceptions. I am going to, uh. Vote against this based on. Five and six. Just wanted to get that out there.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, very briefly, I believe that the applicant has. Demonstrated that, uh, the request for the variance meets. Uh, a sta- substantial majority of. the request for the variance meets, uh, a sta- substantial majority of the criteria established in our rules for approving a variance and that it would be consistent with our past uh, variance approvals.
Okay. Any more questions or comments before we have a roll call vote?
President Ziegler? And I just have a question for Engineer Solviak. Did they provide any other site layouts for this property? And the other buil- building arrangements that would have minimized or eliminated the need?
Administrator Jeffrey Managers, I do recall as part of the uh, wetland submittal that they submitted to the TEP for consideration, they did look at some alternative layouts. Um, but that was part of the, the WACA process that didn't. And then once they got into the regulatory program here for the district, there really wasn't alternative layouts considered to, um, avoid the wetlands because the, the TEP had already made the decision that the wetlands could be filled.
That to put you, if I may, President Ziegler?
Administrator Jeffrey?
I'm on the spot. I'm basically having a conversation with myself, but this is something I think managers need to consider moving forward. Do we not, at least with our rule J, you know, we don't have the same language in floodplain rule, the language that they must consider other site layouts, um, in order to take advantage of highly infiltration, high infiltration rate soils, et cetera. I would look to Mister Smith if that would, if, if something that is written in language elsewhere. If, is the constraint of your own making? And if it is, is there another layout that could avoid or driving at and, um, if there is another site layout, I don't know, just something to confuse the issue a little bit more?
So Mister President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, uh, I'll call the question.
So do we need to vote on calling the question or are we gonna just vote on the? I think we've talked about it enough. Um, Mister Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
On the motion to grant the variance, uh, with the conditions set forth by President Ziegler, Manager Crafton?
No.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
Uh, Manager Cook?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. So that brings us to the permit for the same, uh, well, the same number twenty twenty-three dash zero one two.
Um, Mister President?
Manager Cook?
So I, I move that, uh, we adopt the resolution set forth on page one of the, um, engineers' report pertaining to permit number twenty twenty-three dash zero one two. And that on approval, those resolutions be set forth in the minutes.
So I'd like to second, but amend that, uh, the addition of the recommended improvements to the, uh, or improvements to minute mimic the, uh, the, uh,
Wetland.
Wetland.
I'll agree to that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion on this item? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, Mister Smith?
Manager Crafton?
No.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
With reluctance, yes.
President Ziegler?
Uh, I, yeah, with reluctance, yes.
Motion carries four to one.
So the reluctance is we need to better write our rules so that we can have something that's better than than pervious and then a few storage ponds.
Mister President?
Manager Cook?
For the good of the order, could I ask for another ten minute break, please?
Uh, okay, can we make it, uh, eight minutes in case we all come back early?
Sure. And make it eight forty-five? So we gotta? Right? Okay.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Okay, it looks like we're at the time four forty-five. Uh, the next item are all the managers here. Oh, yeah, okay. Um, I'd like to resume the meeting. Uh, I believe the next item on the agenda is F, the uh, considering the uh variance for uh permit twenty twenty-three dash zero two-two. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for permit number twenty twenty-three dash zero two-two with the recommendations of the engineer report.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have questions, comments, discussions on this to consider this variance?
President Ziegler, I'd just like to say I'm was really happy to read through this because they went back and they figured out how to go about doing this in a much less uh difficult and long-lasting effect on that wetland that's around there. So in my mind, this was really a very good undertaking. This variance is very small and compared to what it was going to be when they originally brought this to us. So I'm, I'm very grateful that they've gone back, looked at it, made the change, and are bringing it to us this way.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, I wonder if we couldn't have uh Mr. Jeffrey or Mr. Soviet, just walk me through how this is different from what was proposed before.
Mr. Soviet, can you?
President Ziegler, managers, I will go ahead and do that and share my screen. Sorry, managers, I've got a screen on top of a screen and I'm trying to get the presentation mode. There you go. Um, President Ziegler, managers, I think the easiest thing here to do to describe what's been changed is we'll just work off of this first slide I had prepared. Um, the image, the picture up in the upper left-hand corner uh is a picture from Google Earth that they just happened to take uh out there. Think it really demonstrates the challenge that the property owner is dealing with well. Um, this, this is an area, you can see the standing water on the pavement, a cracking pavement. Uh, this whole area where their standing water has settled substantially from when it was originally constructed in the uh, in the nineteen nineties. Uh, the applicant originally had come in back in two thousand and then again in earlier this year. And they wanted to raise this entire site back up to what had it, what was originally there back in the, the nineties. Um, some of the, the things to point out on the image itself to just help you visualize how much it's settled. Do you can see the bottom of these light poles? There's these concrete, concrete footings essentially. Those would have been in the ground during the original construction. So you can see there's significant settlement that has occurred out here. Um, it's settled so much to the point that the water that you see standing here now discharges directly into the wetland. The original intent was that this, this water would get collected in a catch basin and then routed its way back to a stormwater pond. Um, on the plan view, the stormwater pond sits back behind or to the east of the building. So what they've done, rather than raise the entire site back up to the original uh project from the nineteen nineties, is these areas that are shown in dark gray are areas that the engineer has determined they can just do pavement rehabilitation. So essentially just the milling overlay, come in, take off the existing pavement, put down new pavement, um, and that would refresh that area. The areas that are shown as checkered or crosshatched, those are areas that they would actually get into the underlying soils to disturb. Um, and in doing so, there's a, a little bit of fill in some area, but they provided compensatory storage in other areas uh such that there is no floodplain variance needed as there was before. What they're in, in order to do that, what they're proposing is to construct a uh stormwater, small stormwater pumping station to collect the stormwater, pump it up and discharge into this existing catch basin, which then discharges into the existing stormwater facility to provide for a stormwater treatment and, and rate control. The variance that they're requesting because they've changed their design, they don't need a floodplain variance as they would have in the original submittal. The variance that they are requesting is related to floodplain and the buffer requirement. And to help illustrate that, I will switch to the second image um that I've, I've taken and I've marked up in color. Uh, the areas, the lines that are red, that is the wetland boundary that has been delineated in areas that's down gradient from land disturbance. Uh, for example, they are removing this curb and gutter through here. So runoff from the site would make its way into this wetland. A similar along this area to the south, they're removing that curb and gutter to get it so that it, it lines up, it's, looks neat, it drains better. Um, and then here to connect up to this catch base and they had to remove the curb and gutter as well. So that's the red line, that's the wetland delineation. These blue lines that I've added to this image is what would be required to have a forty-foot average uh buffer offset for this medium value well. So you can see that that actually encroaches quite significantly onto the existing parking lot. And if you remember from the prior image, a lot of these areas were in dark gray in terms of its rehabilitation, they're not really moving that impervious, they're just milling overlaying. So what we've, what they're proposing is to provide the buffer, an area where they're disturbing the curb such that the runoff could get to the, the wetland itself, and those are the dark blue shaded areas. Um, the variance is good, they're requesting is because they're not able to provide the minimum buffer of twenty foot. In fact, in one spot right here, the buffer width is very narrow, it's a tenth of a foot. And then they're also asking for variance to allow the ability to reconstruct some of this imperviousness within the minimum buffer width such that their facilities can still function as they originally, or as they intend to do to operate their business. Are there questions?
So the one question I have, and it, it looks like they haven't increased the amount of imperviousness, imperviousness. It's the same as it was or is today or was originally. Is that correct?
President Ziegler, there's actually a very slight reduction in the impervious coverage, very slight.
Do any other managers have questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So I, I just want to make sure I understand this. So we're not expanding it, we're actually reducing the footprint. The reason why these buffer rules lies is because they're actually redoing a parking lot and putting that pump station in. That's why we're triggering a, a wetlands, uh, excuse me, a buffer rule.
Correct, uh, President Ziegler, manager cook, that, that's correct. The wetland buffer requirement gets triggered for two reasons. One, they are triggering the stormwater management rule. And then because they are doing land disturbing activity up gradient from the wetlands, then the buffer would, would be required.
And as uh, I mean, it's just a corollary to that statement. Uh, they're really not changing the utilization of this property uh other than correcting a problem, they're not really changing the utilization or footprint of this property from what it was when it was created, which was, if I recall correctly, was pre-rule uh, pre uh prior to or having rules. Am I correct?
Uh, President Ziegler, manager cook, it was prior to the, the rules that were reestablished in two thousand fifteen. Back in the nineties, the watershed district did have a regulatory program, but it was different than what it is today.
Okay, uh, well, uh, you know, my comment, uh, further comment is if, you know, if they're not changing the footprint, uh, this was good the way it was, you know, when they built it. Um, I realize they're disturbing property, but they're making, not making any worse. To me, it's a little not much different in most respects from a milling overlay of a street. Um, uh, you know, on that basis, and since it predated the rules, uh, I can't see any reason not to grant the, the variance. Uh, I said I'm finished, thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we go to a vote? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please, on uh approving the variance for uh permit twenty twenty-three dash zero two-two?
Manager Crafton.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Manager Duvell.
Yes.
Andrew Cook.
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion to approve the variance carries five zeros.
Okay, the next item is approval of permit twenty twenty-three dash zero two-two for the same variance here for the core trust bank parking lot.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I move that we adopt the resolution set forth on page one of the permit application review for permit number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two.
All second.
Okay, Manager Pedersen seconded. Is there any more questions or comments?
President Ziegler.
Uh, Mr. Soviet.
Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge that the, the applicant and their engineer did attend this meeting and echo uh Manager Pedersen's um thanks and willingness that the applicant did to really get creative here and come back with a, a good solution.
Thank you. Um, okay, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton.
Yes, thanks Scott for the comment.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, that brings us to the uh uh, adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero six-two affirm track development ink document as a trade says street, it should be. Um, so is this one that you wanted to start out and talk about, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Um, Mr. President, managers, uh, as one of the uh preconditions to proceeding to consider the uh, assignment agreement or the uh means by which the district is considering acquiring the spring road properties. Uh, one of those uh conditions in the agreement is that the district classify the uh, underlying transaction between track development and the standals as trade secret information. A resolution has been prepared uh for your consideration uh to address that, resolution twenty-three zero six-two. Um, I previously uh provided uh advice about this matter, and if there is a desire for the board to discuss this in detail other than procedural aspects, I would recommend that we go into closed session. As that relates to one of the uh agreement to acquire the real estate under the open meeting law would be a basis for having closed session discussion.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not. I'm not sure exactly where that leads us or whether closed session is appropriate, but I certainly have questions and I realize that I believe I have the authority under the law to discuss these, you know, in open session notwithstanding, but I'm, I'm trying to understand what would, is considered to be trade secret. So on that basis, uh, I move that we go into closed session to have a discussion to find out at least what we're talking about such that we can determine uh you know, whether, what the subject matter is, how it might apply to this case.
I will second the motion, but I just want to remind anybody else um in the public listening, we will still have our uh open uh discussion or time for comments um after we come back from this closed session. So we have a motion to go closed session and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen.
No.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
What a little mola in Amy, I won't get in your way.
All right, admitting everyone. Okay, everyone has been admitted from the waiting room, President Ziegler.
Okay, we're, we're back from closed session. Um, so we have uh resolution in front of us, uh, twenty-three dash zero sixty-two that um I'd like to make a motion to uh adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero six-two affirming track development ink documents as trade secret information.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So for the benefit of the public out there, let me say as follows. Okay, this motion is asking us to deem documents provided a lot, you know, supposedly provided to the district. There is no list of those documents, what we're agreeing to are being trade secret. But you know, the, the managers are proposing that we basically approve a blank slate of documents having been provided to us that are supposedly trade secrets that the district allegedly would not be able to disclose to anyone. The problem with that is that as our, the, the next uh issue on the, on the agenda is to provide an assignment agreement which exactly relates to in documents which I'm going to assume are going to be considered to be on this invisible list of trade secret documents. So how can we do our job to appropriately approve a document when we don't have access to the documents, when the public doesn't have access to the documents? Now, Mr. Smith has said that, well, something's a trade secret basically under the law. If it's supplied by another organization, this case would be track or a standells or something like that. There were efforts to, reasonable efforts under the circumstances to maintain secrecy and integrate economic value, you know, by not being ascertainable. There has been no demonstration that this, that any of what the documents are in the first place. There is no demonstration that there's been reasonable efforts in order to maintain the confidentiality of these documents. We have not been given any history or, or who it's been disclosed to or whatever by the nature. And we, we have no idea if, in fact, it uh, you can derive independent economic value by not being known from some, by somebody else. The documents I have seen, it seems to me whether we disclose the documents or not, aren't going to make any difference because as I read the documents, uh, you know, track has pretty much sewed up this property uh indefinitely. So I, I fail to see uh why these documents are actually trade secrets. And as I pointed out in our closed session, there's nothing we can do to deem something a trade secret. It either meets the qualifications or it doesn't. So in my view, adopting this resolution is in fact worthless, a waste of time uh on that basis because we are not in a position to make that determination. Um, and, and so, and, and as I pointed out, we don't need to have this agreement because we could have a much simpler agreement, which is going to be the, the next issue coming up, which totally avoids the issue of the doc, of other documents. We can have a straightforward document saying, Trek, we'll pay you five point seven uh five million, I guess, I think if I got the number right, um, if you deliver clear title. We don't care how they get it, they just got to deliver. So we're really, by the nature of the document, they're going to want the board members to approve. Um, they've made this an issue that could be eliminated on, on that basis. And there, we should be keeping it simple and this, this resolution, one, is too nebulous. Okay, it, it doesn't cover uh the, the requirements of something being a trade secret. There's no factual support uh for considering any, anything a trade secret. I don't even know what they're talking about, what documents they're talking about. I don't even know if I've been given all the documents or about whatever I see. So I think it would be a failure, a breach of our duty to go and approve a resolution for all the reasons that I just stated. And I would appreciate, you know, and when we get down to this, it's your money publicly. What do you want to spend your money? Do you want to dot the i's and cross the t's? And I'll have more to say on that regarding the next item on the uh agenda. Are you?
President Ziegler.
Manager Craft.
I'd like to call the question.
Um, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Andrew Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Mr. Smith, I believe this is where we intended to uh get public comment.
Yes, Mr.
May, maybe you were going to give a tell them what we're talking about.
Yes. Mr. President, I'm going to recommend that you, we have a brief presentation of what action the district's considering with resolution twenty-three dash zero six-three whereby the district is uh acquiring rights to acquire the three parcels known as the spring road properties. The uh district is, I think, people know, has gone through a series of maybe five or six months of discussions. The board discussions have been in closed session and we're now in a position to present for the board's public action this proposed agreement with track development whereby the district um uh enters into agreement with track for track to assign its rights to the three parcels of property to the district. Um, there are conditions before closing. Um, the, the, one of the most important conditions is the district go through a process to assure that it has financing um with Hennepin County uh to um finance this acquisition and also to go through an orderly process to amend this as a project in the district's plan and provide for detailed um public hearings that would take place some sixty days from now for the public again to comment on whether this kind of project belongs in the district's plan as an opportunity project and whether it should be ordered as a, a project of the district. So I would like um Mr. Pressman to provide a brief overview of uh, and Mr. Pressman is the conservation consultant that the district has retained. Um, and may, Mr. Pressman, if you briefly just outline your, your own background and expertise and, and then describe um you know, in general terms, the property that's being acquired and the process you've gone through and any recommendations you have about it.
Mr. President, managers, uh, members of the public, um, my name's Michael Pressman. I run a small uh solo practitioner consulting company called Conservation Solutions. I've been in the field of conservation real estate acquisition for close to thirty years working on projects ranging from a few acres to a few hundred thousand acres at a time and transactions in the tens of thousands to ten and above um dollars. And above, um, dollars. Um, and I'm, I live in Excelsior. I'm just outside the watershed. I previously worked with Attorney Smith. Uh, when I worked for the Minneapolis Creek Watershed District where I built their land conservation program in the early to mid two thousands. Um. At the request of the district managers, I. Worked with Administrator Jeffrey and Attorney Smith to reach out to. Uh, Trek Development. We had a series of conversations and I believe starting in May. And through June and July where we, um. Ascertained that, uh, Trek was looking for a buyer for the property and would be very interested. In fact, might consider the district a preferred buyer if the district wanted to acquire the property for conservation purposes. We proceeded to solicit, um, proposals from, on, from several appraisers that had been, uh, strongly recommended. Um, picked one firm, Niclet Partners. Engaged them in an appraisal process, um, went out with them to set through the site assessment. Reviewed and commented on the appraisal and received the final appraisal. And entered into negotiations with Trek Development, which was a series of. Business conversations, gives and takes, backs and forths, trading ideas and coming up with what we thought was the. Best transaction that both sides would agree to. Um, it's. So that's what's before you this evening. It is in the form of an assignment agreement because Trek does have a contractual right to acquire the property and there's some. Uh, ease of administration of the transaction and savings and costs to. Just assign the, uh, transaction to the district at closing and then have the district close directly with the Standells. Um, the way the agreement is structured, there's, uh, due diligence period that allows the district to do additional due diligence work on. Um, title, um, environmental assessment and things like that. There's time for the district to line up. Financing, um, and get its regulatory approvals. Um, as well as should the district wish, um, to further explore the possible sale of a conservation easement to Hennepin County. Um, for five hundred thousand dollars to help with the financing of the, the funding of the project. Um, the timing is such that there are sixty days that once the district approves, if the district approves. Entering the agreement and signs it, um, it'll pay some earnest money. Um, that's in most cases refundable. There's a sixty day feasibility period that the district has to determine it wants to proceed, that its due diligence is satisfied. And then closing is within thirty days of the expiration of that feasibility period. However, the district has a one-time right to extend an additional sixty days if it's needed to finalize the financing. Um, and or the regulatory approvals by paying an extra, um, deposit. All this is outlined in the agreement that's been made available to the public. Um, there are some special considerations in the agreement. Um, with the district waiving the contingencies in the underlying agreement regarding DNR permits for kitten tail removal and resolution. Of any existing or prior lawsuits. Um, because they really don't impact the district's intended uses. The trade secret data, um, item that you just took up. And then the district has agreed that it won't work around Trek, um, and kind of. Undercut them and has agreed to pay, uh, essentially a realty commission of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars if it were, if the district did. Work around their backs, but that's not the district's intent. There's a number of default provisions that. Um, Attorney Selkey can, can give over. So our recommendation to you is to. Approve the agreement, um, and enter into it and then work to. Finish the feasibility period, double check that you don't have any concerns and then proceed to closing. Once the regulatory approvals and the financing are in place.
Mr. President, then I would also ask Mr. Selkey to briefly review the assignment agreement. I, Mr. Pressman has provided some of that information already, but. It'd be good to have his explanation.
Mr. Selkey.
Yes. Uh, President Siegler and managers, thank you. My name is Alex Selkey. I am a real estate attorney at Ballard Spar in Minneapolis. I formerly a partner at Dorsey and Whitney. I've worked with. Attorney Smith and, and various, um, colleagues in the past representing, uh. Watershed districts, um, private developers. Cities, Ecomac Development Authorities, Housing and Redevelopment Authorities. In all aspects of commercial real estate transactions, including transactions like this. And Mr. Pressman gave a very, uh, clear and comprehensive overview of the transaction. I'll just highlight a few. Um. A few aspects of that again, again, because the. Property is currently under contract between, uh, TDI Holdings Trek. And the Standells, there's an existing purchase contract out there, the district's. Uh, best opportunity to acquire the property and ensure that it has, uh, contractual rights to obtain it. Is to work with TDI to take an assignment of the, that existing contract. And we've set this up as an assignment agreement because it provides the district with the most protections, um, both in terms of. Not interfering with an existing contractual relationship and the liability that might come with that. But also with the structure of this assignment agreement. Um, there's a number of protections that are helpful. Um. First of all, the assignment won't happen until closing. So most of the contractual rights and obligations that we have are directly with Trek. And one of their main obligations under this contract is to ensure that the underlying purchase agreement remains in full force and effect. And is, uh. Is available for the district to take assignment of simultaneously with acquiring the property by getting a direct deed from the Standells. And that direct deed from the Standells, um, saves costs as Mr. Pressman mentioned, and. While it has a layer of complexity, um, there is substantial cost savings by not having two transactions take place primarily. Um, with Minnesota's deed tax, uh, not having two deeds recorded. And the other. Aspect of this from a legal perspective that I think is helpful for the district. To set it up as an assignment as opposed to just a direct contract with Trek and leaving it, um, and leaving the standards completely out of it. Is that if Trek doesn't perform, there's mechanisms under this assignment contract where we can force Trek. To assign the contract to the district and, um. And take that assignment i- if Trek violates the terms of their contract and. If that comes the case, go directly to, um, closing with the Standells. But again, as long as TDI maintains the contract. We cannot go, um, work directly with the Standells, but that remedy in the event of a TDI default, um, is helpful to the district. And one of the reasons why it's important to set this up as an assignment with that remedy in the contract. Unless there are other questions on the content of the agreement, I think Mr. Pressman laid out kind of the, the commercial terms clearly with the purchase price. There's, I'll just mention, uh, the process again is a sixty day inspection period where the district will be able to terminate the contract if they find anything adverse. Um, title to the property has already been reviewed and there's covenants under the existing contract to ensure that the, the district takes it. Um, fee simple, free of encumbrances. And the district will have remedies and outs of the contract if that's like, not the case, it gets to closing. There's seventy-five days for the district to do their product ordering and plan amendment as well as to obtain financing. And, uh, there's another thirty day extension. Option for closing. If the district needs more time to obtain their financing or to finalize their plan amendment. Uh, in exchange for fifty thousand additional, um, non-refundable deposit. So if the district can't close in the, kind of the contemplated ninety day period and they exercise that additional thirty day right. Um, they would have additional money at risk. So recommend that the district only would exercise that if they're, uh, sure they're close and just in additional time to finalize the financing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
You're done?
Um, yeah, thank you, President Siegler. I'm done.
Um, Mr. Smith, did you have anything else? I guess I'd like to address the public and let them know, you know, in the interest of trying to save time. Our rules, uh, allow three minutes per person. And if we've got a lot of people, it'd be good if the people can, uh. Just say they agree with some stuff rather than repeating it all. Um, or disagree with it for various reasons. Mr. Smith, is there anything further you have before we, uh, take, oh, uh, comments from the public?
No, I think the only other thing is to just be clear that the action the board's contemplating right now is whether or not to enter into this agreement with Trek. Which would launch a process and there will be also, uh, later public hearings, um, when the district considers. Amending its plan and, and ordering the project before this is all finalized.
Thank you. And staff, I ca- I can't see all of the people. So, um, I see there's at least one hand up. Can you tell me, or maybe just let them in one at a time so they can speak?
Yeah, Madura Patel.
Uh, hi, my name is Madura. I have, uh, three questions. One is, uh, first one, uh, I know there's a period, uh, uh, till November sixteenth for public comment. I want to know the process of, of how the public comments will be addressed and. How would we know what were the comments received? Will they be, um, discussed anywhere or available on the website? So that is my first question. The second is, uh, the progress of the feasibility report. Uh, how do we know what progress has been made? What determination has been made? Where can we get more information about that? And my third question pertains to Hennepin County. What will their role be in the conservation? Um, and preservation?
So it, we don't necessarily have the answers to all the questions that will be asked. But, uh, staff will, uh, try and work on, uh. Um, general answers that can be provided at a future time.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Do you agree with that Administrator Jeffrey?
President Siegler, managers, the only thing I would add is, um, my email, I'll put my email in the chat. Feel free to send me. Questions, I will do my best to respond to those, um. And also help with time and efficiency here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Jeffrey, do you have other people with hands up or?
Do not see any other hands up at this time, but I know Mr. Jacobs won't. There he is.
Oh, there he is.
There I am. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Morgan. I'm from Carver and I recently volunteered to serve as president for Spring Valley Friends. And I'm trying to get caught up on everything that's taken place, uh, between now and twenty twenty. I'm watching a lot of videos. And, um, I know I can speak for everybody in the group when I say that we support. The watershed buying this property and we would pool all our resources and finding whatever means we can to make sure everyone's happy in this transaction. And I think I can yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate support when we get it.
Um, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So, um. Well, that, as a matter, matter, member of the public, I think it's important for me to say this as a member of the public, plus I have. Comments, um, if we get to a, the, the resolution itself, but, um. Before people go sign off, you know. My position is this, you know, it's probably a great piece of property to preserve. But that is not within the jurisdiction of the watershed. Do purchasing this piece of property is outside the scope of the powers of the watershed. I recommend you go read chapter one oh three D. Furthermore, the financing that's being proposed is also with outs, outside the powers. Uh, granted under one oh three D. We, this is not a necessary acquisition and I. I refer you to, uh, basically Mr. Smith's website under, I think it's called waterlaws.com. Which goes through a detail under the watershed law. Secondly, even if we could, this is too expensive. We have not had the presentation. What I was told, well, the managers were told this project would delay by several years. A number of projects. So before we should be deciding this and before you should be having a comment period. We should have a complete presentation as to the impact of this acquisition. On projects that are already in our tenure plan. Furthermore, doing this acquisition would further violate one oh three D and one oh three B. Because it would exceed our levy, uh, authorizations. So there are multiple reasons why. In my opinion, and I'm a lawyer, I've been practicing over forty years. I've done billion dollars worth of transactions. This is not an authorized transaction. And I can say this, that if I was the seller. I would not want to be entering into a transaction like this, knowing that these are the potential issues. These issues have not been vetted properly. On that basis. I was approached about this project. With, with the statement that all we need is a public entity to kind of be the sponsor and we'll find the money elsewhere. Well, guess what? But for an easement, no other money has come forward. Why? Because we were told it's not worth the bang and the buck. It's too expensive per acre. All the conservation people are going to do other projects where they get banged for the buck. There is no reason under our rules why this property needs to be acquired. So you're going to end up raising your taxes. Okay, by a minimum of nine percent. And if you'd look at what they're proposing for the budget increases, which they can't do. Okay, it's going to be something like three, uh, hundred, uh, percent increase in your taxes. Or something you're not authorized to do. And we'll be getting to that when they talk about the planned amendment, but I don't believe this has been properly vetted. And by staff or the consultants. And as I've, uh, said, there is a simpler way to do this transaction. They're making it much more difficult. As a result of making it complicated, we're not getting access to the documents. You're not getting access to appropriate documents so you can properly weigh in. When finally, we should not be voting on this project now. We should be having a hearing. You should be getting all the information so you can properly. You have the information to weigh in and ask questions. It is too late. Okay, to go all the way down the path, pay money, perhaps additional deposits, okay, on this. To the seller and not be able to close. For many of the reasons I've already set forth. And I'm sorry it's come down to this, but I have tried to.
Minutes.
I have tried to get this point across multiple times. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, uh, members of the public who wish to speak? Hearing none, can we, um, let me see, Mr. Smith, did you have something listed directly after this?
If there are no other comments from the public, then it's appropriate for the board to consider the resolution and discuss and deliberate, uh, the resolution.
President Siegler, I move we adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero six, uh, three, approving the. Assignment agreement and authorizing the execution of the assignment agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have any questions or comments from the managers?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, in addition to what I've already, uh, stated. I want the people of Carver to realize that they are going to be paying forty percent of some six million dollars for which they will receive no benefit. In the acquisition of a piece of property that will provide no benefit to. The watershed and the waters in the district. And I support that by the fact that these other managers approved a permit. To build all the, I forget how many, twenty some, I don't know whether it was thirty some houses on this property. So that so shows that acquiring this property is not necessary in order to protect our waters under our rules. And therefore. It, purchasing this property is not authorized under section one oh three D. It is not necessary. I further reiterate the point. That. The fund, the proposed funding.
the funding, the proposed funding mechanism also violates chapter one oh three D of the Minnesota's statutes. Uh, no funding mechanism has been proposed that meets that requirement. And as I said, nobody has come forward willing to put in the money. And that was the point that was made by the proponents of this acquisition early on. Just be a sponsor, we'll come up with the money. That has not materialized. Speaking of money, I am against uh, giving Hennepin County a conservation easement on this property that would effectively lock it up forever for a measly five hundred thousand dollars out of a total of five million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. At a minimum, Hennepin County needs to either pay the full fair market value if it wants the easement on everything, or get an easement on a piece of the property that's worth five hundred, uh, what is it, five hundred thousand dollars, what they were going to uh, do this. And as I already stated, and you'll see that the next resolution, this blows the levy, blows the budget. And and as a result, it is also not authorized under the statutes. And we've already had several uh, items that come up on this agenda and maybe you've you've remembered them. Where we have other issues with property, but there is no proposal to buy those properties. And why not? There's other piece of property where they wanted to put, what is it, twenty-seven, thirty some units literally cover almost every square inch of a piece of property. There was no, you know, say, well, let's go buy this property. There is no reason to buy this property. Under our rules, we can adequately protect the water resources, which is what we are tasked to do under the statutes and no more. And that's why the statutes specifically say we can only acquire property that is necessary. Not because we want to, but it has to be necessary. And the mere fact that we can permit and protect our waters, in my opinion, does not make this acquisition uh, necessary. And the final point is, um, as I stated in closed session, this agreement is way too complicated. Okay, it can be much uh, simpler. All we have to do is have the Trek agree to give us fee simple title. And if they don't, they can give us an assignment, but we don't have to go through the hoops of doing an assignment. It's unnecessary and the amount of additional fees pales in com- in comparison to the amount of money that we're paying. And so I don't believe that the fees is a legitimate material reason to go through a complex means of acquiring this property when a much simpler straightforward means exists. And uh, I just want to make sure, and and again, we haven't seen a presentation about each one of the projects that are going to be delayed and by how long. And that was specifically provided by Administrator Jeffrey. And it seems to me if we're going to be voting on something like this and the public has an interest in it, we should be making that presentation at a public hearing so that you can all get your input once you have all the information. And then voting on it today is premature because once we sign it, we've locked ourselves into spending at least twenty-five thousand dollars if I have the number correct. And if we want to extend it further, we're going to have to write another check for fifty thousand dollars plus paying Mr. Pressman, God bless him, additional fees to to uh, uh, you know, continue negotiation. We're going to have to pay more money to Mr. Smith, Mr. uh, Selkey, et cetera. We should get this down while we can. There is no, and there's finally, there's no reason to be in a hurry. Like I said, I've done many of these transactions. They are, they are not going to end up developing this property at seven, eight, nine percent interest. If they do, they're taking a big risk and they can do that. But it's not our job, our job is to do it methodically. Okay, and get the correct amount of public input before we make the decision. I believe it would not be consistent with our duties to the public to go ram forward this pro- this project when in fact this document wasn't posted, an agreement wasn't even posted at the time that the original resolution was posted. So I think there's, there's all kinds of process issues here that we need to resolve. And you need, you, the public deserve a better presentation of what it's going to cost you, what projects are going to have to be delayed, and when are they going to accomplish? And the final one, which just reminded me, this project does not score as high as the other projects that we uh, um, have on our list. And some are going to argue that it does, but we don't have a true funding partner and not at five hundred thousand dollars. But you know what they did? They went and said, oh, because we, somebody will put in a little bit of money, we're going to give it the maximum score. Okay, the maximum score for having a funding partner. Well, to me, that's not the way you do an analysis, okay, and 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 set up priorities. We've come up with a priority process. What they've done, and I've provided my comments to it, and that should be made available to everybody be then and before the hearing and before we vote on this, so you can look at it and ask the questions. My view is the way they rated the the scoring, it was a self fulfilling prophecy. They knew consciously or subconsciously what they, what the answer they wanted, and they filled it in accordingly. And my results, when I went through it and tried to apply a judicious logical process, I came out way below the threshold for us going forward with the project. So I think you, the public, need an explanation. You deserve an explanation and more information before we go and agree to sign on a document that at a minimum is going to cost this district twenty-five thousand dollars plus an untold amount of money for Mr. Pressman, Mr. Selkey, and Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
So I think I've, I've covered all of my issues at at this point in time. So thank you very much.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
I'd like to call the question.
Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
On resolution twenty-three oh sixty-three, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
And your Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Andrew Pedersen. Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, so I believe the next item is to adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero sixty-four. Authorizing notification of public hearing on a plan amendment in a public hearing on ordering the project.
President Ziegler. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero six four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the uh, adopting resolution twenty-three dash zero six four?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I move to table this matter.
Uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails for lack of a second.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Well, the, the problem uh, is that this uh, proposal for plan amendment is incomplete. Um, it only covers uh, a, a change to the plan for an acquisition. Uh, it refers, the, the change in the table refers to another amount which is not addressed in the plan amendment. What some of those items would, at least the inclusion of the purchase, as I've already said before, uh, goes beyond our levy amount and therefore, if we spend what we do, we are going to be in violation of the law and spending more money than what we're allowed to. And in, and if you look at the, the, the uh, trying to see if I can find it here. We're talking about uh, nine million dollars, which is uh, would be a total, which would be three times or almost three times our normal expenditure, our normal levy. If we go out with two uh, and with the two million and five, when what was it, twenty twenty-seven? If if I have, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now. Uh, we're, you know, we're going to be doing two hundred time, uh, two hundred percent of what we normally levy. And so you can only imagine what's that going to do to each one of your taxes. So one, we should not be approving this, certainly inconsistent. And in fact, it recited, it violates uh, the law with regards to uh, our levies and moving it to twenty twenty-four would not change that. It would still be a violation of the budget that we've and the levy that we've already uh, approved.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Man. Your cook.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, uh, where does that put us on the agenda now?
Item eight. We're supposed to be at nine fifteen.
Item eight. At least it's the last page of the agenda.
President Ziegler, managers. The um, boardroom, as Manager Cook pointed out earlier in the staff report, um, there is some delays uh, in the um, full tables coming in. As I said, the um, electronics are where they're having an issue. So the um, vendor was going to see if they could get the tables minus the electronics and then uh, install the electronics after that, after the fact. So um, even without it, you know, at the manager's discretion, we could still set, I mean, all of the uh, interactive technology is in place and is functioning. Um, we tested it out as a staff last week. Um, once we figured it out, it was working quite well. Um, so we could still set up other tables, but again, it's up to the managers uh, what they want to do with that. Um, we could certainly bring it back to the uh, next workshop and discuss it in more detail at that time as well.
Uh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I don't see any reason to hurry now. I'm sorry, I was right the last time. Um, hate to say it. Uh, you know, this is, we should just get it and get it set up. Make sure everything works. And the way it, you know, the way we want to do it, I think it would be great uh, on the November, um, uh, work session, uh, we can go through or before that and try to do a dry run at regard, but I don't see any hurry into uh, Jefferson. I'm not the only one who has medical issues. Um, whether it has to do with themselves or relatives, et cetera. So I see no rush. Um, and uh, quite frankly, I, I wish the state rule would apply to us where we could have interactive uh, for all meetings that would, would make the most sense. So I think we should, as just summarize, wait until we have everything up, all set up and then come in and uh, work. Cause I would like to, I'd like to see it because just what I saw during when I was waiting for the tour, I have a lot of questions about how things would work.
President Ziegler.
Yes, Manager.
I'd like to, I'd like to concur with Manager Cook. I think let's just get it going the right way and then come and I don't think we're like in a big rush or something. Workable and we know it's functioning the way that's supposed to and then we'll do it. So I think we should just um, let your Jeffrey get the thing in working and let us know when we should adjourn there in person.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
There's some committees that really would like to meet in person. So if that doesn't preclude that, I'm fine with that, but it would just be much easier for our finance group if we could lay stuff out and be there and and be able to discuss things in person. So, and I know the CACs indicated they want to meet in person.
Mr. President.
Um, first I'd like to hear from Mr. Smith.
Well, okay. I think Mr. Smith is wondering why.
Yeah.
I'm wondering what his comments would be based on the other managers' comments. Mr. Smith.
Sure. No, I, I think um, there's, you know, the board adopted a resolution earlier, you know, to address the COVID situation. Um, as you can get the office uh, equipment in order. And it feels like things ready, you can take it up. I, I don't think there's urgency to having the next meeting in person necessarily.
Okay.
From a legal standpoint.
Well, Mr. President. Well, I also point out if you get the CDC feeds, you know, COVID is on the rise and there is an extremely low percentage of people saying that they are going to get the newest vaccine, which is the the single comprehensive vaccine. So uh, I for one am particularly leery about closed spaces uh, and people. Uh, you know, giving my, given my uh, health situation and I know there are others in in similar, similar situations or related situations. So let's not hurry in doing this. And in fact, I wish the legislature would change the rule. Um, and quite frankly, I don't see why you can't conduct all the business you need to uh, you know, these is Zoom, et cetera. Almost all businesses I know, if anything, they even conduct their internal meetings via Teams or or Zoom. They don't waste the time walking down to a room and sitting around and waiting for people to attend. So I think we need to move into the twenty-first or let's, I, I would hope it would be the twenty-second century. I'm finished.
Okay. Administrator Jeffrey, the next item on the agenda is the workshop schedule.
Mr. President.
Manager well.
So can I ask the question of Mr. Smith or I guess the board, is it uh, to Manager Crafton's comment, is it possible if we choose to meet in person? Is there any reason why we can't do that?
No.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, managers, if I could speak to this. Um, one of the issues uh, about having, uh, in the resolution that the board adopted, um, it was a finding that it was not feasible and prudent for all managers to meet in, in, in person meeting. And we came up with this hybrid approach, recognizing that for some managers, their health conditions are such that uh, uh, it's, it's not comfortable for them uh, health wise. And so we addressed that by saying we would set up this hybrid situation. If there are committees um, where that issue doesn't apply, uh, especially a committee of two managers, I think that can be accommodated um, while we are um, also acknowledging that there still is this general situation.
And also the, the fact that we can be running a, a live test, so to speak, of having the, the, the system set up. We could, it could still be interactive, but we could be meeting in person for those that wanted to meet in person. And and running it, again, I don't know if it's the notion of a test scenario is appropriate or not, or if we, just as a committee, we can decide that we want to do it that way, that we can do it that way, I guess is my question.
Would defer to Mr. Jeffrey on the logistics, but yes.
Yeah, the President Ziegler.
Yes.
Managers, uh, as I said, the, the uh, interactive technology is up and fully functional. Um, so if we want to hold the subcommittee meetings uh, hybrid, we can certainly do that and allow the uh, public to join in.
So if we want to do it on a card.
So if we want to do it on a card table, we can do it on a card table.
Exactly.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
But just as a kind of, you know, it's one thing to have a committee, you know, and you get four people. It's another thing to have a houseful. And again, if you, if you've read the CDC, this stuff lasts for eight days. It's viable for eight days. And so I have a question for Administrator Jeffrey. Have we done anything vis a vis our HVAC system or otherwise to limit or try to control pathogens within our facility?
President Ziegler, managers, no, we do not have. We are not the maintenance of the HVAC for the building, it's one shared HVAC system.
Okay, points taken on all accounts. But I think we really need to move on to the the next item on the agenda. We're not proposing at this time to have we don't know when we'll be able to get our system up and running for sure. We want to test it before we have a meeting scheduled where we're counting on the equipment to work. And Administrator Jeffrey will keep us informed as far as how the testing is going. So the workshop schedule is next on the agenda.
President Ziegler, managers, I just wanted to, as we get towards the end of the year and the holiday season is coming up, I wanted to note, I think the November workshop will be fine, that's the Thursday before Thanksgiving. The December workshop, however, falls on the twenty first of December. So just something for the managers to keep in mind if they want to have that as you make your travel plans for the holidays. How you want to do that. We do have Ehab workshop coming up. We've got the governance manual discussion. So we do have a few items yet to be done in workshops, but I just wanted to make the managers aware of that.
So December, what was the workshop for December?
December twenty first.
Fine with me.
Yeah, I leave the next day on a trip for a week, but yeah, that works.
That's fine with me. Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Can I ask that, you know, at the workshop in December, can we get a workshop schedule for the upcoming year? So, you know, we know in advance that they think it was a little helter skelter this year. I think we have a lot of important stuff we want to discuss. You know, we're going to have this acquisition and or litigation regarding it. So I think we need to, you know, get the workshop, those things scheduled sooner rather than later. Then I think December would be a good opportunity to review it then. And even if we adopt it in January, we should see it before before we get to January.
Administrator Jeffrey, does that make sense to you?
I I can pull together what we'll know.
Yeah.
So I mean, clearly there are statutory obligations that are listed in the governance manual and statute. So we know when those will be. And as Manager Cook pointed out, there will be other capital related issues. So yes, we can have a at least a good outline of the workshop calendar for twenty four.
Is there any other workshop stuff you wanted to talk about?
That's all.
Okay, that moves us to member reports on the agenda.
It's Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So my report is this is I I think the board basically did not fulfill its fiduciary obligations with respect to the three resolutions regarding Noble Hills. I don't believe there was proper information that was provided in advance. Whether required or not, we should have provided a full opportunity for people to have seen all the documentation, should have been given a presentation on the the schedule and what was being slid. I hate to say it, but the way that, I don't know who came up with the names on those three items. You know, if this was a securities disclosure issue, I believe it would be flagged for not for not basically not disclosing material information. And I think there's a lot of people who whether there were a lot of people or not, it should have been clear what was going to be discussed, and it wasn't. And not all the information, I don't believe, was was timely provided. And finally, I'm going to repeat, and it would like to be repeated in the in the minutes, my statement regarding the manager's report from from last month. I've seen no improvement or or in any of the items that I brought up. And I believe that we're neglectful in our duties by not addressing those those issues. So with that, I will yield.
Thank you. Do any of the other managers have reports? Hearing none, Administrator report.
President Ziegler, managers, I have nothing additional at this time.
Next item is legal counsel reports. So I I see you shaking your head.
Perhaps Mr. Smith needs a technical advisor when we do our our meeting.
Okay, upcoming topics. The Ehab workshop. Anything to say about that, Administrator Jeffrey?
That'll be coming up and we'll be doing the same the same protocol with the managers that we've been doing with the other groups.
Good, anything?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
When are we going to have that workshop?
President Ziegler, managers, that is to be determined yet. We need to have the fourth the fourth technical advisory panel meeting. It'll be after that, and since we're dividing those meetings into four separate cohorts, it will likely be the December meeting would be when I would expect we would have it.
Okay, thank you.
Administrator Jeffrey, would you like to just mention our upcoming events?
Yeah, so President Ziegler, managers, last night, they had, as I said, they had the build a rain barrel workshop, very well attended, went quite well. We have the gravel bed giveaway. I believe we've still got a few trees available. If people out there would like some, reach out to Eleanor Mahon. That's going to be on Friday. They are working on the soil health workshop, that's with Minotak and Amel Creek. And then we will be doing Cycle the Creek, we'll be leaving from Riley Park, heading up the Riley Creek chain through Lake Susan and coming back. And refreshments will be available afterwards in a T shirt.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions.
Manager Cook.
So the gravel bed giveaway, I think that's tomorrow, isn't tomorrow the fifth?
That is correct.
And if so, what do we need in order to pick up the trees? Do we need to bag them? Will they be bagged? Since they're going to be bare root, right?
Yep, so we bag them for for the people. We we will take them out of the gravel bed as as the people show up and bag them. So you should not need to bring anything in order to acquire your trees.
Okay, very good, thank you. And then with respect to the cycle of the creek again, is that on the website?
That is on the website, yes.
Okay, thank.
President Ziegler, I'd like to move that we close our meeting adjourned for the evening.
A second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Any comments before we vote?
Thank you so much to staff for hanging in there with us. It's really late. Thank you.
Yes.
Get up early.
Yeah, I'll second that. I think I'm going to sleep in. Can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
I can do it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, on the motion to adjourn. Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Five zero, we are adjourned, sleep well, everyone.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks, all. Take care.
Have a good one.
Night, all.